Vanessa, trustee Vanessa Bertozzi, as you can see, is virtually here. As of today, well, actually, a few days ago, she did come down with COVID. And we were hoping that she was going to be within the five-day quarantine and be able to make the meeting. But she is not feeling comfortable enough to come at this meeting. And I respect that wholeheartedly. So Vanessa is, as of last minute, 3 o'clock today, we decided to bring Vanessa in virtually on the screen today. So she can hear you, you'll be able to hear her. We should be good to go, barring any other technical issues. Okay? That's why Vanessa's on the screen. You guys ready? You ready? You guys ready? All right. I'd like to call our June 14, 2022 meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Is there anybody here to make a public comment? Yes, John. Come forward, up to the podium. Introduce yourself, name, address. You have three minutes.
Thank you. You guys like it? John Worsick, 52 Violet Place. And I'm actually here this evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I've got you here this evening on behalf of the Duchess Disability Advocacy Partnership. That's a committee that I had the privilege of joining, participating in. We've been very involved, as the board is aware, advocating for ADA compliance as we contemplate the expansion of dining onto our sidewalks. I have this statement to speak to. The subject is the Resolution Authorizing Sidewalk Dining for 2022, which I believe is on the agenda this evening. Dear Village Board, since early March of 2022, the Duchess Disability Advocacy Partnership, DDA for short, has advocated to village officials, committee chairs, business leaders, and the local chamber of commerce the need to comply with Title II and Title III of the American With Disabilities Act. We are disappointed that the Village of Rhinebeck Sidewalk Dining Resolution fails to provide the vision of Rhinebeck as a model of inclusivity as had been discussed between Mayor Bassett, trustee Slavy, and Lisa Tarakone, the executive director of the Economic Resources for Independence Living and co-chair of DDA on May the 23rd. At minimum, we ask that acknowledgement of ADA requirements be made, as well as a stated intention to work towards to work towards as the current comprehensive plan process continues. The City of Columbus represents a model of genuine inclusivity and offers a template which we would hope the Village of Rhinebeck aspires to achieve. A two-page flyer is attached for your consideration. Give this to our village clerk or someone. We support the goals and efforts desired by the businesses of the village. We respect their advocacy in achieving these goals, their goals, and we hope that our advocacy is equally respected. In conclusion, we continue to seek a working partnership with all parties. After all, disability rights are human rights. Be happy to answer any questions. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Roger, I saw your hand come up.
Thank you. Good evening. Roger Kwan, live in the village here. I comment with respect to the development plans for Seven Oakley or what maybe others know as Oakley, Old Oakley Middle School. And there's a rezoning request. You can't hear me?
Stay closer to the mic.
Roger Kwan, resident of the village. I'm here to question or speak to the rezoning request on Seven Mulberry. I believe that's the former Waldorf Brogan Center. And I'm curious to know from each member of the board whether they're going to hold off on making decision on rezoning pending the findings of the Comprehensive Planning Commission that this board has sponsored. That's one question. Two, if not, would the board consider other zoning options presented by the community at large? That's two. And three, is this any zoning change of this nature? Is it subject to permissive referendum?
All good questions. We haven't even heard their presentation yet. And so maybe we'll be able to answer some of them at the conclusion of that. But I can't guarantee where we're going to go until we see their presentation.
Very good. Thank you.
Unless anybody else. I'm not going to speak to the rest of the board. Somebody else wants to comment?
I don't think it's subject to permissive referendum.
Okay. Pat, Kathleen?
Pat Evans, Sober Stride. My question is that the May 23th outdoor dining meeting, I was not able to stay for the entire meeting. And Gary, I thought you said it was being taped and could be viewed at a later time by the public.
Correct.
Where is it viewable? Because I've been on YouTube. Where else would it be?
The only place it will be in the Malaya announcement will be on Panda. And I don't know where. I have no control over when Panda posts it. So you could contact the Panda office and it will be on.
So I have to contact?
I have no control over when they post that.
Well, are you from Panda?
I am, but I can't answer that question. I do believe it's been edited but has not yet been posted. That's my understanding.
The May 10th Village Board meeting is not on Panda either.
That's out of my control. I don't, I can't answer that question. I will bring it up to the party.
I hate to put you on the spot.
It's all right.
But what's reasonable for us to?
I can't.
Pat, it's not fair to put him on the spot. We can deal with Panda on the side. I told you, we don't have control over when they do it. You're free to contact Panda at your leisure, please.
So my other question has to do with, do you have any sort of protocol for when you post things into the cloud that are going to be discussed tonight?
They're supposed to be posted Friday at the same time the agenda. We had an issue this week in terms of our staffing issue. We thought something got posted and it did. Our mistake.
Okay. So the sidewalk dining resolution was not posted until it was sometime in the afternoon today?
Correct. And that was our mistake. We thought it was posted, but due to a staffing concern, it did. Thank you for accepting that. Kathleen?
Kathleen Evans. And on a slightly different note, I'm just wondering, because I have not seen it announced anywhere, what roads are planned on being paved this summer? When that will start? These are little things I know, but they matter. And as it go into this outdoor dining, I noticed that the curbs on Main Street, East Market Street, have not been refreshed with the no parking yellow paint. And then on the, I understand that now tables will be put on the sidewalk, possibly, but probably, where there is supposed to be no parking. And do you have any plans to, for safety sake, highlight and repaint? I noticed they were done outside this building, but not down to the intersection.
So I'll answer the first part. Then the first part is the painting. We have started it. We're trying to get that done as efficiently and effectively as possible with the staff. So it will continue throughout the summer as the staff is available to do that painting. Just so you know, it is not a requirement to paint. It's kind of a courtesy to paint. It's not required by police or anything else to make that happen. But we are trying to refresh the paint to make it more visible, and we're working towards that. I don't have a date of when it can be completed, but we do have a person assigned that when they're free to be able to spend time to do it. This is the second question I'm going to.
Right now, we are looking at a major reconstruction project here on Center Street. We have a water pipe that's been roughing annually, but not more frequently. So we have put together several grants and a proposal basically to replace a part of the water line, re-cave and reconfigure and put some more drainage into this, into this street here along Center Street. So that's going to be this year's, this year's major project.
And lastly, going back to topics that are already discussed, it would mean a lot to me as a resident of the village and as a person who has disability issues on a couple hands in her own family that she deals with. From just a humanistic standpoint, it would be so refreshing to me as a person to hear the board say something and then do something for the ADA compliance that has been suggested and talked about with outdoor dining. Because this is kind of like a fresh slate. It would be nice to see that done. And I know it affects me, not me personally, but my family personally. And it would just, it's just like a human thing to do. And I know that so many comments have been made, but there's no direct response from the board that personally I find so frustrating that I just don't understand it. So if that could be talked about, mentioned, and explained, it would make me feel better as a person. Thank you.
Kathleen? No, 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 you gotta come up. You gotta do it.
Hi, I'm Suzanne. I'm just being a neighbor of someone who has a Volkswagen SUV parked in front of someone's driveway down the street. So if someone's at that meeting here, just so you know, somebody's driveway is being locked under par. I noticed it locking in. So that's why I was just going to say it over there.
Okay, anybody else? Elder?
Elder Pupko Village Green. I just got the sidewalk resolution, so I only glanced through it. But the word facade, I wasn't 100% sure. Like, what happens if a restaurant has a porch in the front? So I don't know if that word is a good word to use. And then the other thing is, if I understand this correctly, some of the, some of the tables might be on the curb and others by the building.
So there'll be a presentation shortly. I think your question will be answered.
Well, it's just because afterwards, I don't know if I have a chance to speak on it.
We're going to have a short public comment session.
Tonight? That's tonight? Yeah. Okay.
We're going to, if you, on the outdoor dining, we already held a public session. I'm going to take public comment, but if it's a public comment that has been made before at another meeting or to correspondence or whatever, I'm going to ask you the whole opposite. We have that on record.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, anybody else? Okay. We're going to close the public comment session. Christopher? Are they here? So this is going to be a presentation. Vanessa, trustee Bertozzi, had basically run a contest for National Resource Institute call for photos, and these are the winners of that. Vanessa, do you want to say anything before Christopher?
I don't have to say anything if you want to. If you have a cock of your own words.
No, I'm not going to do it. I'm going to let you and Vanessa handle it.
So I wanted to say, I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight to meet these fantastic photographers and community, but I, but Christopher worked really hard along my side on the Natural Resources of Victoria. To let him do the honors to say a little something and to give out these thank yous to these amazing photographers. So I'll let Christopher take it away.
Okay. Christopher Tavner, I live on Lorraine Drive. Can you hear me? Vanessa put out a call for photos to complement and illustrate the natural resource inventory that we've been working on for several months and which is now available for public view at climatesmart.rhinebeck.org. And we would encourage everyone to have a look at that and to remain attuned to nature in our midst. The photography that was submitted in answer to Vanessa's call captured the unique beauty of where we live. We are honored to include these photographs of dozens, of dozens of our neighbors in the NRI. We recognize five individuals here, I hope, tonight because their photos resonated with the public who voted these as their favorites. We're so grateful for their participation in making the NRI more special and visually engaging. So this evening, we are happy to present some books curated by Oblon as a thank you. The first is to Bill Peckman for his photo of Rightlet Landing. The second is Avery Gilford. Her photo contemplating sea level rise.
Thank you for your work on the Natural Resources of Victoria.
The third to Glenn Hershaw. Glenn Hershaw for Snowy Road. Fourth to Will Labassier. And finally, George Beckwith.
Thank you, George. Now, thank you for all the wonderful work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you too, thank you, Christopher. Thank you, Vanessa, for organizing this and making it all happen for the Village of Rhinebeck. And thank you to all the people who submitted photos. Congratulations. Okay. The next is a presentation for the rezoning request for Six Mulberry Street. Victoria?
We're here.
So can we hook up?
Yep.
Well, I can get started while David's setting out. Hi, good evening. I'm Victoria Palidoro from Moten House Control from Boro MLP. Here tonight with David Ruff, Maysh Friedman.
I can't hear you.
Is this better?
No.
I don't know. Okay, there we go. I got very close. This is not a COVID-friendly location. Okay. Here tonight with David Ruff and Maysh Friedman, two members of Duchess Shepherd. Missing tonight is Gietu Lemani, the third member. We are here tonight because Duchess Shepherd has submitted a petition for rezoning to create an overlay district on the 1.43-acre lot called the Oakley Schoolhouse Overlay. Many of you know this as the former Oakley Schoolhouse or as far as the Brogan Center. The requested overlay district would support the adaptive reuse of the former Oakley Schoolhouse, which is a 15,554-square-foot educational building located in a residential district. The building is an outlier in the residential district due to its size and its commercial history. If the building were to be developed under your existing residential zoning, permitted uses would be limited to a single-family home, a two-family home, a nursing home, cemetery, hospital, a religious institution. The building at this time is not brain size for any of its uses. The creation of an overlay district would allow the structure to be adaptively reused to provide rental housing. This provides much-needed diversity of housing, supporting the elderly, small families. Of note, to many attendance tonight, five of the units would be ADA compliant, accessible for those in wheelchairs and who need other adaptations. Reuse is also an environmentally friendly and responsible choice. The greenest building is the one that already exists. Reusing this structure will keep materials out of the landfill and it will eliminate the need to create and utilize new resources to build new structures. As part of the project, and David is going to pull up the plans eventually, you also all have hard copies. Single-family homes are proposed along South Street and East Market Street. And the purpose of those single-family homes is to continue the residential streetscape. So, you know, South Street's very concerned with the residential neighborhood. And putting two single-family homes there continues that neighborhood feel. It also serves to block the building, whereas now it's visible over a very big parking lot. The overlay district concept and what's being requested is consistent with the Village's 1993 master plan. This is the document that's still in effect now. And I don't know if any of you have read it recently, but it's sort of striking in that the concerns in 1993 are probably the same concerns we all have now. Some of the concerns were lack of affordable housing, lack of diversity of housing, and too many businesses catering to tourists. So I know that we're undergoing a new master plan now, but I do expect these issues, especially diversity of housing, to continue to be at the forefront of the Village of needs. The 1993 master plan specifically identifies the need for historic preservation, identifying the great significance for local families as an important consideration, and also identifying the need to have sensitive rehabilitation of historic properties. For those of you that don't know, this building is listed on the state and national registers of historic places as a contributing building. Goals 4.1 and 4.2 of the master plan also call for the village to maintain a traditional mix of ages, incomes, and families. And so again, rental housing does provide housing for people that can't maintain large lot homes. It's less expensive, et cetera. So what we're proposing is an overlay district that would cover the whole 1.4-acre lot. If you go to page eight of the site plan, it shows the overlay, but it's the lot as you know it today. The overlay district would allow a total of 29 bedrooms. It's currently proposed to be spread out into nine apartments and four single-family homes. And site plan approval in this overlay would be required for all modifications. So the village would continue to exercise control as the development is built out, just as it does for any other project in the historic district. What's interesting about the project, and David's going to look really shortly, is that the proposed multifamily house lot would comply with almost every standard for residential development, except for the use already in your zoning code. So currently in your residential district, you have a height limit of 35 feet. The building would need that. You have 30% lot coverage. The proposed lot and building would need that. So this can be developed sensitively in a way that complements the underlying residential district while still allowing and accommodating multifamily uses. The proposed overlay zoning would allow some encroachments to the roof, specifically solar panels, a green roof, a roof deck, you know, options to utilize the space, but not to increase the height of the structure itself. As drafted, the overlay district would also require the provision of EV parking and bicycle parking spaces, again, trying to maintain a redevelopment project, and further require that all lighting be dark sky compliant in recognition that this is a residential neighborhood. So tonight, we ask that the board consider moving the request forward by hiring consultants to start the review process, setting an escrow for the applicant. Ultimately, the project will need to be referred to Duchess County Planning, Planning Board, and a public hearing will be scheduled. We know that you're probably not ready for that staff tonight, but we'd love to see that happen. But the fee and the escrow are the first that we need to cover. I also want to note that since there's no other economically viable permitted uses for this structure, 15,000 square foot structure in the residential district, that we really ask that you consider our request because, you know, unfortunately, the alternative is demolition and redevelopment, probably with single-family homes, which is a use, but it's not necessarily filling a need for the Village and the community. So holding on to traditional buildings would fabric help maintain our sense of community. So I'm going to turn this over to David Ruff for a brief presentation about the project and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
Yeah. The rolled-up drawings. Obviously, we're having a bit of a technology snip move.
Let's, I'll.
Do you mind holding them? I, I.
I got it.
The best we're going to be able to do. At least they're visible to the gallery. Why not just the first?
I tried to actually.
Do you want to use the easel?
So. So thank you, Board, for convening. I've given this presentation a couple times. Many people in the gallery have heard it. I'm going to work through some things rather quickly to focus on most of the new material. Can everyone hear me okay? Yeah? So again, I provide, we provide here the image from the Thoroughly Birds I View. This is an 1890 drawing of Rhinebeck looking towards the north. In the red outline is the site that we're talking about, where there was a schoolhouse, a very Victorian-ish looking schoolhouse on that site. That picture, I believe, is what you see on the right of this, of the schoolhouse. Next.
Victoria, you want to bring over here?
That's good. That's a great idea. A brief history about the site that, I can't tell you when the Victorian structure was built, of course, but in 1931, the image that you see here, the left part of the image, so the lighter red is the Oakley, was a, the Oakley Schoolhouse that was built as an attachment, we believe, to the Victorian house. In 1939, the Hudson River Review, it was produced by Maris in 2018, documents a fire that occurred in the older part of the structure reported to more or less to the ground. It is, and I don't have real evidence, but I believe it is at that point that the red cedar block structure on the right side of that image was added. Thanks. As Victoria mentioned, I'm showing here both the 1979 historical report from the village that lists the building as construction in 1931 and provides some very brief language there about its contextualism. And then also, in September of 2020, the state Interior Department of Interior conducted a review, including Rhinebeck Village, and listed the building as contributing and also called it out as a construction date in 1931. They also have some descriptive language that is there from page 105 of that document. Should be interesting to read. It's not very long. It's two hundred pages, but the actual excerpt is very short. Working through briefly, these are part of a, part of a planning, a vicinity diagram. And then this image is literally taken from Dutch parcel mapping. It's just to describe a lot as though it is a through lot that has a frontage on East Market, frontage on Mulberry, frontage on South Street. that has a frontage on East Market, frontage on Mulberry, frontage on South Street. And so unique as a lot for the village. As Victoria mentioned, this is a survey conducted in March. Mr. Decker, we can, will have license, signed and sealed copies available for the village that shows the footprint of the existing structure as well as various other septic, ash basin, other elements, and defines the lot area as 1.442 acres. The next image is, just to give a visual to what Victoria was talking about, this is the extent of the Bokley Schoolhouse overlay that is being proposed. So it is inclusive of the entire lot, the entire current lot. So maybe this is now some development. And we got, for that boilerplate stuff, so to speak. The proposed subdivision plan is to.
Can you call the little fire?
The proposed subdivision land is, plan is to divide the lot into, the current lot into five lots. A corner lot facing onto East Market and Mulberry, an infill lot on Mulberry, a corner lot on South and Mulberry, and an infill lot on South. And then the Bokley Schoolhouse will reside on the infill lot on Mulberry. A lot diagram on the right side, all the lots are, all the lots 1, 2, 4, and 5, even the village minimum lot dimension, lot, lot size. And while we are not proposing houses on those lots per se, we are shown a two-story, 2,500 square foot, three-bedroom as a placeholder to, to try to analyze viability. And we are showing what would be required for that house, a three-bedroom house, which would be a 1,500 square foot in-ground septic. We have blowups now of these individual. I guess before I go into that, a little bit about maybe the why. And so the why is an expansion of what Victoria was talking about adaptive reuse. Of course, she mentioned the mantra that so often pops up in Google, adaptive reuse, and this building is, the building already built. That should not go unnoticed, right? There's an enormous amount of embodied energy in our buildings that are built. They've already occupied and expended a carbon footprint. And so while demolishing or removing that building certainly wouldn't be the complete loss of that material, right? We recycle materials in today's world. It would be a net loss, particularly for the carbon and, and energy that would be required to build a new building in its place, or a new structure of some kind in its place. As importantly, I think, is the notion that adaptive reuse has a cultural and community significance, right? There is a history to this building that predates anyone here. And it is part of a continuum, it's part of a community's experience, it's part of a collective memory that is, that is embodied in that building. That is not to say that there aren't buildings that are certainly deserving of being torn down. Surely there are. But it is our belief that this is not one of those buildings, that this is a building that is worth preserving and is worth repurposing, which is really a driving mission of adaptive reuse, to find a purpose for it, a use for it, that will reinvigorate it and make it a new vibrant contributing element to our community. And so we believe that's what we are proposing. I think that Victoria really covered, you know, prior, obviously as we developed our proposed subdivision, we read the 1993 master plan, right? And we talked about it among ourselves, with our design team and among our partnership. And I think Victoria part, pointed, you know, clearly to a number of places where diversity, inclusion, and aging, and aging population, demographically not proportional with Dutchess County, actually exceeds, in terms of the village residents itself, exceeds that, that percentage, that it is a housing type that is clearly identified in the village master plan from 93, mind you, as in need and would be contributing to the vibrancy and life of the village. Sorry, I just lost mine. There we go. Great. So focusing in on Lot 3 a little bit, we blew this up. And this will give you a better, a little bit more detailed vision into it. The lower right side shows the existing footprint of the building, less some of the ramps and entry sequences. What's in purple is the proposed demolition of that building. So about two-thirds of the gym, those of you who have been in the structure know that the gym actually extends into the body of the old schoolhouse. And then on the right, lower right side, also in purple, is the red cinder block annex, which I'm sure there can be argument about it, but from our point of view is truly not contributing, a bit of an eyesore, together with the fence, I would say. The proposed building then sits on a 29,000 square foot lot. We are proposing nine units in this building. We're proposing a parking that would be two-for-one, so 18 parking spaces, two of those fully ADA compliant. We have separated the entrance from the building by almost 100 feet from the driveway, both for, obviously, safety, but I think that was also for, we consider enjoyment and of experience upon, in entering the building. The septic required Hildenbrand engineering perform the septic analysis of our site. They did test kits and perk tests throughout all lots, determine the, to help us determine viability of the soil for, for septic. We are not in a position to avail ourselves of the village sewer system. It does not extend that far, and so that is not an option available to us. However, the, the land does perk extremely well. So 8,000 square feet of septic is required to support the 17 bedrooms. Most of you may know that septic is plus-size for bedrooms, not bathrooms. So 17 bedrooms could potentially use one bathroom, wouldn't be super comfortable, I think. So, so what we're showing you in both the olive green and the dark green are the septic areas, they would be contiguous to one another. One resides partially under the parking, and the other is in open space to the rear of the lot. We are also showing screening trees. We would propose relatively mature trees to help screen from, screen the neighbor to the west, as well as the neighbor to the north. And then, given that we're looking out onto our own neighbor, we would do that, obviously, to the east as well, that's not clearly shown here. We are also proposing that some of that open space be landscaped, not to a graphical point of view, it's dead flat. But whether it's a jungle gym or some sort of, or amenity that would support the building's residents. It is, it is though meant solely for the residents. It is not a public amenity, it is a private amenity for the residents of the building. The lot coverage also is less than 20, less than 30% right now. As drawn, I believe inclusive of the ramps, it's 26, 26.6%. One thing to note, and there are plans a little bit later on, is that of the nine units, we are proposing eight two-bedrooms and one one-bedroom, of which five of the units, over 50%, are fully ADA compliant. So they are accessible, their facilities, their bathrooms are accessible. The, even the, the units on the second floor that are not ADA compliant in the sense that they're not accessible because you need a stair to get to them, they also though are ADA compliant from a bathroom perspective, from a door-turning radius perspective. So, so next, please. So I'm showing here now lots one and lots two. Lot one is again on the corner of Mulberry and, and East Market. Lot two is infill lot on Mulberry. Stressing again here that these are viability lots. We are showing houses on them for, as an effort for viability to demonstrate that 2,500 square foot, three-bedroom sits on the lot, comfortably in the septic, is accommodated. The square footage of the lots, frontage, septic, and bedroom count are indicated below. In addition, all 10-foot setback lines are shown and are observed. So lots four and five is the next page, and again, as well here, they're similar in, in terms of size, you're proposing, demonstrating, not proposing, but demonstrating that similar-sized houses can reside on them, and each septic is accommodated, again, yeah, for the, the septic. The next page, really, lots over, is just the preliminary plaque. So it is my office, now architecture, giving eats and bounds based on the decor survey to each of those lots. We can have that.
Excuse me, David, I'm just going to ask you to kind of speed up. We have a lot to do for something.
No problem. Let's do, um, let's go to personal plans. I just want to show those real quick. Is that there?
That's the interior layout?
Yeah, yeah, just the interior layout.
I think we can.
Lots over?
Yes.
On the elevations, there is significant detail in the building, hair and bone, soldier coursing, stack coursing. So this is the north elevation, the existing elevation, but if you go to the next proposal, page 105. Here you're looking at the east, I'm sorry, south and the north elevations marry each other. We grouped in a rhythmic way windows, and included significant amount of coursing, herringbone pattern, et cetera. In addition, the cornice that currently exists only on the north facade would be telegraphed around the entire building to give it a more stately appearance.
David, can you also discuss that when you're giving the facade, the new treatments, where you're getting the bricks from?
Sure. In the demolition, we would harvest, obviously, the bricks from the existing building, right? So we would be able to reuse those bricks, which would guarantee a certain match, certain synthesis to the existing building. It would not look like a new, well, not really much condition. It would not look like any new, new build. So all the window openings that could create, would be created are harvested bricks, as well as the, as well as the gym itself.
And, and the same decorative treatment with the brickwork?
I think I explained that soldier coursing, the herringbone patterns, the stack coursing, as well as the, what is a very Victorian kind of grouping of windows, actually refers to some other buildings that are Dakota, the buildings are quite a bit larger, but is, is part of the design thinking so that it eels like it has, it hearkens to the, the history of this building. ADA compliance is met with a ramp, there's a portico in the back which provides and helps provide weather protection to that ramp. And, yeah, so I guess we'll move through. Some of these renderings have, or show, well. Right, we're proposing a line wash on the building. To do this would mean, the benefit of doing this is that it will increase the contrast, I think, I know, between brick and mortar, which allows some of those details, right, the herringbone patterns, some of the freeze details, really to come through and be more prominent instead of being sort of washed out in the field, which is our map. I think that will help make it something that is visually appealing, as well as something to be proud of. The houses that you're seeing on corn on lots one, two, four, and five are really not closed houses. They are meant to show, importantly, I think, that a street wall in a context of Victorian homes along Mulberry Street is something that is stated actually as the goal of the 1993 master plan and could work very well in this context. Yeah, so the rest of the menus are really to try to, you know, give you all a sense of, you know, the, how the building fits in, the, how it fits in, how it could be as contextual and be an amenity, really, to the village. I will note that in terms of the unit layout, there are amenities within the building. We have bike storage, we have a gym, we have a lot of storage in the, in the building for winter gear, skis, all those kind of things we thought about. So, yeah, I tried to keep it short and miss things, but I'm sure questions will bring out the things I missed. Thanks. And I'm sorry about the technology, although.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a lot of questions.
Sure.
About this. And my only concern is, having heard this, having heard this and being able, we have David Gordon of Gordon Swenson here this evening, who's been working with on this project, maybe he could make a couple of comments. But in retrospect, thank you, thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience to work with us. Thank you for working through, helping us with the, out with our comprehensive plan and, and working that process. But I think we need time, we need time to digest, work with legal, work with the board before we can make any comments.
Sure, we don't expect you to, to make any meaningful comments tonight. We're here to answer any questions you might have about the proposal, about what we proposed. But we would see it as a step forward if you would at least set an escrow so that you can hire consultants to help advise you on this process. The way, you know, it's a rezoning with a specific project in mind for Lot 3, which does require some coordination between the planning board and the village board. So at some point, someone will have to decide to be a secret lead agency, and they'll be referred to the other agency, and we'll have a public hearing for both bodies. And, you know, we want to make sure that you're getting the right guidance. And so, you know, if we can set the escrow tonight, that would be a great start.
Can I just say something real quick? Sure, okay, great. I just wanted to thank you all for this. You very clearly heard many of the comments that were made whenever it was, it feels like 53 years ago, but it was not, it was more like a few months ago. And just to be clear, you have been patient. I asked you all to see if you could wait for the comprehensive planning committee to get stood up, the comprehensive planning committee has been stood up, but the results of the comprehensive planning committee's work is not going to be complete for at least a year, and then rezoning in relation to that will be sometime after that. If we, we cannot demand that you wait for the work of the comprehensive planning committee to be complete, that's not anything that we can do. And so in order to make sure that we are doing, I, what I believe is the best and highest use of this remarkable piece of property, building aside, there are very few 1.4 acre lots that have opportunities to be developed, left in the village, especially so close to the village center. So I think it would be an error if we did not figure out a way to work with you on making sure that this parcel is developed in an appropriate way for the village. And so my opinion, and I'm not speaking for the board, but my opinion is that we should do that. We should pull together an escrow, we should hire, you know, the planner, probably the one that's working on the conference planning committee. We should perhaps engage some members of the conference of planning committee into a small subcommittee, and we should think about this project in parallel to the overall work of the committee. Because the last thing I would want you to do is to get impatient, tear down this building, and throw up what is currently allowed by our zoning code, which is however many two-family homes, which may or may not, and I think it is not, the highest and best use of this property for the overall success of the village land use plan. We've learned a lot about density transfer as part of the conference plan process. We've learned a lot about our existing housing inventory as part of the conference plan process. Turns out 30%, three zero percent of our housing units are inside three to nine unit developments, which is, took me by surprise. It took everybody by surprise, to be perfectly honest. And so we're learning a lot as part of the conference plan process, and we're going to continue to learn a lot. And I think asking you to wait for all of that to be complete is going to be an unlikely request that you will abide by, given how patient you've already been. So that's my thoughts on this. I, I think we need a minute, you know, like a couple days, to communicate with our lawyers about what we're going to ask you to sort of come back with. I think an escrow is a good idea. I think beginning a process where. The, even the town planning board has a lot of thoughts on the Berkeley School House. So, you know, it's like, it's a thing. And that's all I'm gonna say about any of that.
So while we have David here, I'd like to introduce David Gordon of Gordon Swenson, just any questions or any comments that you have, David?
Yeah, I'd like to, Lydia's comments, as valuable as they were, are mostly what I consider to be tactical and specific to sort of the situation here in particular, and we can all note that they, that these folks have already applied to either the building inspector and perhaps ultimately the planning board for a demolition permit. Originally, the application was the building inspector, and the building inspector ruled you had to go to the planning board, I'm not sure if they've done that, but that is, you know, that's part of the tactical concerns that you're raising, but I want to sort of go back to, you know, the applied basics of zoning and planning here. This is a very important parcel with a number of characteristics, and what the board has to determine, really, is whether you view the proposed rezoning optimally, should be handled on an individual basis, which is very possible because of its fairly unique characteristics, or whether this is part of some broader theme in the village, and there are a number of themes that might apply, just off the top of my head, this is multifamily housing is going to be probably an important issue that the village is facing from now on and through the complaint committee. Conversions of existing buildings to multifamily, or conversions in general, is another theme that might apply here. And the short answer is, to the extent that this is seen as part of something, a broader issue for the village, then it tends more toward the sort of thing you'd want to wait for the complaint committee to do a village-wide look, to the extent you view this as sort of an individual parcel that needs individualized attention, which is very possible here for a number of reasons, you might just decide, okay, we're gonna jump in and take a look. And I would suggest to you that that's the preliminary determination you need to make, is whether we're interested in looking at this as its own little box, whether we're looking at this as part of, or to set a theme, because if it's the latter, you're probably not going to go ahead and hire a consultant to look at this, you're probably going to wait for that process, assuming it complies with the tactical concerns that Lydia raised. If you look at this as an individual parcel that serves to be thought about upfront because it just has its own characteristics, for whatever reason, then you would begin to move in that direction. So I would suggest that we get together and kick around those ideas, and then if you were to decide that the individual characteristics of this, and perhaps tactical considerations as well, would benefit the village to look at this individually, then we would begin to move forward on the grounds that Victoria has suggested. Then there are another number of questions, is, do we like their proposed rezoning, or do we want to do something else? Is this a five lot subdivision or a four lot? I mean, in addition to reusing an existing building, this is also a subdivision that's, I would characterize as somewhat aggressive. Now, you may decide that's characteristic of the neighborhood or not, and that, so these are, all consequential determinations that start from the beginning, is, is this something you want in this parcel to look at, or is this something you want to take a look at as part of the overall reconsideration of the village?
So, a couple questions. Do we run the threat, if we look at it as an individual piece, it's very unique, does that save the issue of spot zoning? In other words, on an individual look, are we more likely to be subject to a challenge?
Spot zoning, I mean, I'm gonna give you an off-the-cuff definition. Spot zoning is a rezoning of pretty much of an individual parcel that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. You know, you can rezon in an individual parcel, and individual developers come along, I don't wanna say all the time, but it's not unheard of for individual development to come and say, I want you to rezon this. The question for the board, and perhaps ultimately for a court, if it was to sit and review of this, is, is the rezoning work that's being done consistent with the comprehensive plan, or is it a departure from the comprehensive plan? If it's a departure from the comprehensive plan, it's spot zoning. In other words, that's something that comes in, that's almost a label, a pejorative label that comes in afterwards. If it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, no harm, no foul.
Okay, got it. The other question I have is, why is this, do we require a law change and we're gonna do a special district for this? Is there a more informal option where you would just take, you would just swap development credits? I mean, Lydia pointed out, you could actually have ten units if you went through, you know, a special permit. Can you, you look at this as a subdivision, can't you just transfer those development credits into the parcel three, into the brick building, and not have to go through all this law?
I have to take a deeper look at your code, but in general, the bottom line is, you have a local law, which is your zoning, that would prohibit the multifamily development, and I don't know of any other local law that you have that...
That would allow you to transfer.
That, I mean, to do what you're suggesting would be something that would require very, very significant legislation.
Got it.
I'll look at your code to make sure you've got it.
No, no, it's not in there, it's not in there.
And that's, that's gonna be something for the, that's gonna be something for the complaint committee to think about if they want to do something like that. But if it's not there now, they're gonna need some legislation to do anything other than what's consistent with the comp zoning. So, we are looking at legislation, we're looking at a zoning amendment, the question, but I want to also emphasize, this is legislation, this is zoning legislation, and despite what they really want and are asking for, you have a pretty open field in terms of what you want to do, particularly if you rezon. I mean, right now, we're sort of boxed in by the zoning, but if you were to decide that this deserves a rezoning, you pretty much have an open field, as long as you can make a finding that it's consistent with the comp plan. Obviously, you're not gonna, you can't bring in something that's completely new and unheard of in the comp plan, but as long as it's, as long as it's arguably consistent, you make that case, you can do what you want once you start rezoning. So their ask is really an ask to be filtered through what you see as the benefit to the village.
Just, just to be clear, though, we're gonna be setting an escrow, establishing an escrow, the escrow is to be used on our rezoning request, not to do a much broader than...
That's why I'm recommending that they think through some of the items first before we jump into...
Thank you for your contribution to the comprehensive plan process.
That's why I said, before we do that, I want them to think through how they want to approach this.
Well, for example, I, I don't know if I like the idea of the nine units, like, maybe five would be better, so I don't want to get boxed in by doing escrow, and then, in other words, can we shape it later as a group?
Well, now we're in sort of middle ground between what Victoria just mentioned. You can, if you decide you want to move forward on, to examine this proposal as an individual proposal, redevelop the Berkeley School, maybe do a subdivision, you can hire a bunch of consultants and work through all sorts of issues, traffic, all the other impacts, and then you might determine that nine units in the, in the school is a little bit too much, and that happens all the time, and you're not gonna go for that full rezoning. You might determine that four houses is a little bit dense, you might not want all that. That, this, like I said, you have an open field, your zoning process can and must be consistent with the comp plan, or at least not inconsistent with it, and also as a matter of the seeker process, consistent with the needs of the community and not going to cause any significant damage. And just as one example, the more units you have, the more traffic, and you may end up, you may end up impacting some of those issues, and your, the consultants that you hire, you know, your engineers, et cetera, might say, you're bumping up against this, or you gotta watch out for that, and then you would, then you would, I mean, the fact that they put this on paper originally doesn't mean that you are stuck with it, but, you know, there's gonna be that little interplay where they, then they're not gonna wanna pay for something that's gonna come up totally empty, but at the same time, you know, you need to hire the consultants, and you're gonna make these decisions. So there's a little bit of chicken and egg involved, and that's why I'm advising, make some preliminary sort of thinking through what you think is consistent with the comp plan, what you think might come out of this, and then we can discuss whether or not it's appropriate.
All right.
Well, I mean, you have some work to do.
Yes, we have some work to do. So what I'm gonna propose to the board is, I'd like to take thirty days and set up some meetings to work through some of these questions with legal and with the board before we take the next step.
I hear you, we're just gonna continue to push for a treatment as an individual lot, it's very unique with, you know, three different frontages, an existing schoolhouse that people in our village have gone to. We think it can move forward, and we think that going through a formal process will allow the public to participate the best and allow us to work out some of these concerns and issues that you have, so.
Right. So, thirty days, okay?
So should we plan on...
Well, you don't have a choice, I'm gonna tell you when you're thirty, you're not thirty.
Well, should we plan on coming back to the meeting in thirty days to escrow, or to get some decision, will we be on the agenda, or are you just asking for...
I don't know what the outcome of the discussion will be.
Okay.
You're asking me to predict the outcome, so, until we have these discussions and go into, you know, executive session with legal, that's what we need to do. So, I don't know, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And we're gonna move forward.
Okay, thank you everyone for your time.
So we're not gonna take public comment tonight.
I have a question.
You're not gonna take public comment tonight, John?
Well...
You know, you can submit your questions if you want, and we'll...
I'm afraid it won't be answered timely. My question has to do with, of the meetings that are contemplated over the next thirty days, will they be public meetings, and will there be public notice of those meetings?
You know, just, some of them are gonna be executive session meetings, because we're gonna meet with legal counsel, and we're gonna go at the board, which we're entitled to do, to meet with legal counsel. So I can't, I'm not gonna, I don't know until we get together and start hashing this out and figuring out what a plan is.
Will there be public notice that the meetings are taking place?
If there is, we will, if there is, we will publicize them. How's that, okay? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We're gonna move forward here. While, while I have David Gordon here, then we're gonna move forward to the outdoor dining, and we're gonna, so we're gonna kind of reshuffle the agenda a little bit, because David has another meeting that he needs to get to, so we're gonna move forward, and what I'm gonna ask for, there you are, Brandy's gonna go over the application that we, that we prepared and discussed, and then we're gonna summarize, and as I said, I'm gonna take a very limited, very limited comments on, on the outdoor dining, but if you said it before, we have you on record, there's no need to say it again. So, with that, Brandy Nelson from Ty &amp; Bond.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me all right? Yes, okay, great, thank you. I'm Brandy Nelson, I'm a village engineer with Ty &amp; Bond, we're on West Market Street, and we were before the community on the twenty-third of May for a public information session regarding the use of the sidewalk for outdoor dining under certain circumstances. We took that public comment, we made a presentation based on some suggested design standards from a number of other communities in the United States. We took public comment from the community, we worked with the village board staff, we had an advisory discussion with members of the planning board, I think we've had maybe a half a dozen revisions, we've done some field work, out checking things in the community, and what we've come up with is an application, and again, just to frame this, this is for the year 2022 only, so this is a temporary process, it's an interim action, and it would permit, under certain circumstances, some limited outside seating if the particular applicant met the criteria for outside sidewalk dining. Generally speaking, the use of the sidewalk three feet from the facade of the building would be available to provide some outdoor dining. There are some requirements that are dictated by the New York State Liquor Authority, so depending on the type of establishment, there may need to be a barrier, and we've provided some criteria for the barrier. All of our criteria in the application are pertaining to maintaining first and foremost access along the sidewalk for free-flowing traffic movement. At the public meeting, we had talked with everyone about having somewhere between three and five feet, we revised that to have it be five feet, except where there are limited impediments, and in those, for instance, the tree wells extend and may shrink the side of the sidewalk, in those areas, they'd have to maintain four feet. So really, every applicant is going to have to assess whether or not they can meet the criteria in the application and work with the village building department staff on the application. So, I don't know, Gary, if you wanted me to run through the particulars of the criteria, or...
Yeah, I think some of them are very important, Brandy, if you don't mind.
Sure, so, so the design criteria are attached to the permit application, and they are as follows. Number one, sidewalk dining must terminate by November one, 2022. Number two, sidewalk clearances must be sufficient to ensure a pedestrian path free of obstructions. There must be a minimum clear path of at least four feet width at the tree boxes or other pinch points, and a minimum clear path of at least five feet width, otherwise. The entirety of the dining area must be contained within the three feet adjacent to the facade of the building. Number four, obstructions to entrance ways, emergency exits, fire hydrants, and any other public utility are prohibited. Entrances to the sidewalk dining area must maintain a three-foot wide accessway from the public sidewalk to the building entry, so that's running perpendicular into the buildings, perpendicular to the sidewalk into the buildings. No permanent structures may be affixed to the sidewalks used in the dining area. The dining area may only be occupied by chairs, tables, benches, umbrellas, heaters, and planters for the convenience of the patrons. Number six, if alcohol is intended to be served in the outdoor dining area, the area must be in compliance with all New York State Liquor Authority laws, subject to the liquor authority's enforcement. Immovable barriers shall be so arranged as to separate the dining area from the sidewalk and shall be installed only on the facade side of the sidewalk. Barriers must be thirty-six inches high, barriers must be constructed with durable, high-quality finished materials such as steel, wrought iron, glass, or finished wood, and must be of a dark color consisting of navy blue, black, or dark green. Fabric inserts, chain link fencing, chicken wire, or cyclone fencing are not permitted as barriers. No advertising may be shown on the dining area barriers. The sidewalk dining area and associated movable barriers may extend along the adjacent building facades up to a maximum of twenty-five percent of the total length of each of the neighboring facades. The applicant must provide written permission with this application from both the building owner and the business owner for each adjacent building whose sidewalk is so utilized. Where barriers are extended beyond the applicant's facade, the barrier may not cross alleyways, driveways, or other eager ways of the public sidewalk. Number seven, if no alcohol is being served in the sidewalk dining area, no barriers are required, all other rules of this permit will apply. Number eight, if no alcohol is being served in the sidewalk dining area and a no parking zone is located adjacent to the public street, or in, excuse me, is located on the adjacent public street, the dining area may be established on the curb side of the sidewalk and will not require barriers. All other rules of this permit will apply. Number nine, music of any sort is expressly prohibited. Number ten, no exterior lighting which is unreasonable, which unreasonably illuminates beyond the boundaries of the sidewalk dining area shall be permitted. Number eleven, any propane heaters used for the comfort of the diners must be located within the barrier area. Propane heaters must be used and installed in accordance with manufacturer specifications. Propane heaters and tanks may not be stored overnight in the public way. Number twelve, any umbrellas must be located within the movable barrier area, when open, they must not extend into the public way. Umbrellas must be of a dark solid color consisting of navy blue, black, or dark green, and no advertising is permitted on the umbrellas. Number thirteen, tables and chairs shall be constructed of durable materials such as metal, no folding tables are permitted. Number fourteen, a thirty-six inch clearance is required to accessible tables, no seating or any other obstruction shall overlap the access aisle. Number fifteen, no outdoor cooking of any type is permitted on the public sidewalk or outdoor dining area. Number sixteen, operations shall comply with the village noise ordinance. Number seventeen, these rules shall be strictly enforced, including by summary abatement of violations and revocation of permission to provide sidewalk dining. And then there's requirements for the applicants, including providing their liability insurance, a sketch of their proposed dining area showing how it meets the requirements of the permit, payment of the fee, and copies of licenses and approvals from the health department, as well as signed and notarized permission of the property owner if the applicant is not the building owner.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thank you.
You wanted to summarize.
I did, I wanted to take a minute. As you can all imagine, I'm sorry that Panda does not have the May twenty-third comments up yet, but we have been hearing about outdoor dining now for two and a half years, two years, and I've only been part of some of that fun. And on May twenty-third, it became very clear that a large percent of the population that we don't usually hear from is strongly in favor of some kind of sidewalk dining. And on May twenty-third, it became very clear that a large percent of the population that we don't usually hear from is strongly in favor of some kind of sidewalk dining. It's welcomed as a community building. They, they felt very strongly that it helped add to the vibrancy of the village. And so, of course, as we in government positions, we have to balance all sorts of competing needs. So we believe, or at least I believe, that this is a comprehensive solution that balances the requirements of the ADA, including a pending rule change on sidewalk requirements. At the moment, sidewalks are only required to be three feet at pinch points, according to the ADA, but they have a pending rule change that that number has to be four feet. And so we have adopted the four feet. And then, so it's the requirements of the ADA and the needs of physically disabled population. We are balancing the state liquor authority requirements, our status as a Greenway community that prioritizes a walkable downtown area, the strong desire amongst the majority of the people who commented on May twenty-third to have sidewalk dining because it enhances the cohesiveness of our community, the reality of our historic downtown with narrow sidewalks and many existing sidewalk pinch points that are three, three and a half feet wide, the fact that COVID is still alive and with us and remains very dangerous to the immune compromise, and we heard from a few of those as well on May twenty-third, as well as that the recognition that restaurants are still managing trying to provide service to a section of the population that absolutely refuses to dine indoors. So that's a lot of needs to balance all at the same time in a village with fairly narrow sidewalks. So we have an existing sidewalk sale law allowed for our retailers to extend three feet out from the facade of a building for a rack or a table or some such. You can see a lot of them. They use it for benches, they use it for planters, they use it for wrapping clothing. That is allowed in our current law. And so we figured we would extend that to dining tables. So three feet from the facade, as long as you jump through all of the hoops as very clearly laid out by Brandy and researched by her team and vetted through legal. So here we are. Here we are. This is the compromise solution that we have discovered. And I believe it does a reasonably good job. It is temporary. We also had a lot of comments on May twenty-third about enforcement. So this is a one strike and you're, two strikes and you're out?
So no, there'll be, the way the enforcement policy is going to work on this, and we've met with both our enforcement officers and, and the police department. The code enforcement officer is really the enforcement arm for the village of Rhinebeck. They are the ones that have to issue the violations if there is a violation. Okay? Police cannot issue the violation in a zoning request. But what our police can do is they can document it and then give it to the code enforcement officer, the same as you, the public, can do. You could document if you see a violation or you perceive that it's a violation, you can document it and you can send it to the code enforcement officer. The rules that we've kind of, that we've established with the code enforcement officers, you're going to get one warning, right? And if you don't comply with that warning, you're going to, and you get another violation, you're out. You will lose your permit to operate for the rest of the season, and that's the way it's going to be. So, but it's the code enforcement officer's job to make that decision. It's not our decision, it's not the police decision, it's not your decision. It is the code enforcement officer's responsibility to, to, to enforce that. So how, that's how it's going to work, right? You're free to comment to, or, or document, take a picture, and send it to the code enforcement officer, you know, if, if you so choose to do, if you perceive that there is a violation. So that's, that's going to be the process for that. I also like to comment, trustee Slavy said this is a compromise. This is truly a compromise. This is truly a compromise on many fronts. Restauranters wanted a lot more space. They wanted to be able to expand like they have before, but we're not giving it to them. Right? We needed space on sidewalks.
They ain't doing anything right now, Gary.
Wait, I'm making a comment, excuse me.
Yeah, I did it.
So we try to accommodate sidewalk facilities as best as possible to make sure that we have free accessible sidewalks out there for everybody to, to be able to use this as a pedestrian path, right? Eleanor, you said on the facade, the facade is the front of the building, okay? So the street side of the building, that front port of the building, that's considered the facade of the building, to answer your question. And the only place where there's going to be allowable to have it on the street side is if there's a no parking and you don't serve alcohol. As for instance, Samuel's is on the corner there. They don't have parking, they don't serve alcohol. If they wanted to set up the same three-feet space and meet the same requirements, they could do it on the curb side, as an example. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just wondering, like, the Thai restaurant, they had a porch there?
It would be three feet from the porch.
Right?
It'd be three feet from the porch, but they probably don't have enough space in the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm curious. Yeah. And none of our buildings on East Market Street have, oh, I shouldn't say that, some of them do a porch, yeah, that have outdoor dining. So this is where we're at, to be able to move, to be able to move forward. So on this board, I'm going to open up for public comment.
Yeah, no, I had a point. I can't get behind this, and actually, the substance doesn't bother me at all. I think it's pretty strict and it's pretty nice. My question is how, how this happened. We, we, the village board has to approve contracts, and someone hired Ty &amp; Bond to produce this, and we, we didn't do that. That, that is not a, a contract from, from the village. So there's some, some blurring of some people on this board that are applicants and advocates, and someone else needs to pay for Ty &amp; Bond. I, I just, I don't understand. We just went through the process with, you know, with the Vogly Middle School, where we talked about escrow, we talked about our own specialists that would shape whatever the applicant wants to do. You know, I don't know how this happened. I'm, I'm completely in the dark. There's no contract at all with Ty &amp; Bond to do this. They're, they're, that's our village, that's our village engineer, but we don't all just dial up the phone and then hire Ty &amp; Bond to do an initiative that we're interested in, which apparently you are, right? I'd like to get behind this. I'm off the bus.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Well, I've been reading the application and listening very carefully to all that people are talking about, and I think that, at least for me, the important words are compromise and temporarily right now. I think that we've seen a change in how people would like to see and perceive the village. We had a very radical situation when we had the COVID, our COVID restrictions or lack of COVID restrictions. It definitely surfaced that a group of people do like, enjoy outdoor dining. There are real concerns about accessibility and making sure that our sidewalks are, maintains that they're testable for everybody. I think that this is actually a good experiment. We have one year to see how this works, and we can check out if this really is a viable solution, if people like it, if it turns out to be a workable solution or not. There's definitely seems to be a desire for people to have outdoor dining, and I think that we are trying to accommodate that while also making sure that we pay attention to everybody's needs. So I like this idea, and I think as a government, it's not a bad thing to do, to try something and see. And if it stinks and we find out in November that it wasn't any good, then we know that. And if we find out that it was good, then we know that. Or we find out that it needs revision, then we know that. So I think that from a, just from our administration, this is a kind of flexibility that we should be, should be showing. I think flexibility, there's accountability, and I do think that it has, it addresses the various needs that have been brought forth. And I would mention to you, Brant, there is a hundred and fifty-dollar table, per table fee that is, is part of the, part of the application, in terms of recruiting. That'd be my comment. There's my comment.
Public comment. Christopher, I'd like your hand go first.
Mr. Catner again. Does this amount to a zoning change? My first question. Second question is, have you considered what the reaction may be to all those restaurateurs who paid this space, which is not on the sidewalk, to this change, which doesn't really help that, as it's particular?
Would you like the answer?
Oh, the third thing, why such groovy colors if you have brothers? What did you say was good for the entry?
Three feet.
Three feet, it's wrong, no.
For the entry into the sto, into the building? The doors are three, three wide, so that's the.
Yeah, but you need eighteen inches on the full side.
I came to mix the umbrellas, but I'll try to, it's not a zoning law change for a couple of reasons. First of all, the zoning law didn't, doesn't address the sidewalks, per se. But more importantly, and this is really important, this is not a local law, this is not amending any of the zoning code, this is a resolution just for this year. So in other words, this, this establishes a permit program for the timeframe from now or whenever it gets passed and implemented until November first. So it does not change the zoning law. Once November first hap, this is just a temporary expedient for the sidewalk, and once November first comes around, we're going to come right back to where we are. And ultimately, if there was any change going forward, that would take a local law, not necessarily a zoning law, but a local law to take a look at all the experience into account. So this is a little bit, this is just a temporary permit program that is not a zoning change.
To answer your question about the colors, we got a lot of comments in the last couple of years about downtown looking like garbage, so we wanted to make sure that everything was somewhat consistent and a little muted. That was the color question, and you had one other question.
Yeah, is the question, how does, how does the other restaurants react?
Oh, we've heard a lot of testimony from all the restaurants basically saying that rising tides raise, raise all ships. And we've also heard a lot of testimony from the retailers saying that rising tides raise all ships. So, you know, Josh Kroner, who won't be able to take advantage of this at all, strongly advocated for it, Josh Kroner, who owns Terrapin, strongly advocated for it to be able to help that his fellow restaurants who don't have any outdoor dining to be able to serve that population that refuses to dine indoors.
I would just point out, the current, the current, the other restaurants that are not looking at the sidewalk already have the benefit of legislation in terms of the zoning law. They can go back for an amendment to their site plan. So if you have a site plan, for example, for a restaurant in a plaza, or even on your own lot, if you go ahead to the planning board and get that site plan amended, which is a standard process under zoning, so they have their way forward. And when they also, the money that they've paid for, for parking, for it to expand, those are permanent spaces. This is a, this is a one, just a one-year thing. So it's very much apples and oranges, and it's really meant for the restaurants that don't have, they can't go to a site plan amendment because their, their expansion would be onto the sidewalk, not onto their own parking lot, for example. So they're very much in a different situation, and those other restaurants already have their own way forward. And many of them, of course, have, have utilized it. Victor, you were next.
Thank you. Hi, Victor Britton, South Street.
Three things. Is, and Brandy, you probably can answer this, it's maybe it's actually addressed in the, in the document, is the, the four feet or the five feet measured at ground level? How is it measured? So in other words, do you put a tape measure on the ground and measure it, or can you do it in air from the tree where the?
On the ground. You need to have a smooth, that's what the diagram shows.
Okay, good.
From near to the plant?
From the edge of the planter, yes.
Right, okay. And does the plan address waitstaff service to the tables, so that, that, the sidewalk area will be used?
He can't hear you.
I'm sorry?
I can't hear you. Can you use the microphone?
Thank you.
You might have to pick it up.
Does the, does the code address server and waitstaff accessing the tables? Does that, does that happen from the sidewalk space?
Server usage of the sidewalk space does happen, happens from the sidewalk space. There's no separate designation.
That's funny. I, you know, I, I think from both sides of it, from, from people that, you know, are concerned about it and from people that are advocates of it, just because it was unfortunate that the document was unable to be viewed, and I think there was, even Brandy did a great job of showing details. I don't know if there's any way to solicit or get, you know, I think there's probably some, some good suggestions that might come across, and if there was a way to, it sounds like you're going to approve this tonight. So, and I know, I, I know, but you put so much into it, it just, it just seems perhaps a missed opportunity after all this work to, to not solicit that. Because I know people were looking for it.
We were disappointed to discover at around noon today that it wasn't actually in the
Yeah, I don't know if you have options, but I asked you to consider something to, because you've been trying very hard to, to provide opportunities for the public, and it's, it's a shame to, and I know there's a lot of pressure on you, so it's a shame to rush it at the end when you've done such a good job of providing public input. Thank you. Thank you, Victor.
I saw another hand over here.
Yeah, Steve.
Come on up. No, you got it, come on.
You won't beat me because I can be loud, but I mean, the microphone. Anyway, Steve Miller, twenty-seven South Street. I would never think to go before Victor, of course. How could I do that? Victor, one of my points is that what Victor said in the last meeting was a sunset sort of approach to it. And Richard, I really appreciate what you're saying about flexibility. One of the things that I took away from the, the voice of the village was that we need to be flexible in this, in this period that we're in. Everyone, I should say, a great majority of the people enjoy outdoor dining. I do, I do think it brings vitality and livelihood to the village. I will caution, in my opinion, that rising tides, while they do lift certain retailer and restaurateurs bottom line, they do sink parking and walking and public use of sidewalks. So I think that needs to be part of the context of where you buy. It sounds like you're in the right place to me personally. I haven't seen any, any proposals other than what was going on with Ty &amp; Bond and to point about that presentation. I, I don't know enough, and I'm probably speaking out of turn, but I do appreciate the comment about, you know, what, how did we get to a point where someone is proposing something that seems like it was maybe not in the community spirit of these, of these meetings, but something that felt to me a little bit like out of context with the village and the way it's being flexible in terms of the approach of what's going on. There were, there were drawings that didn't make sense, in my opinion, to what was going on with our environment. But I think, you know, overall, it just feels like we're in a good place, and you guys are doing good work in terms of like staying flexible with this stuff. But this, this year will be a really, a good sort of litmus test to see how we can incorporate people who do enjoy eating outdoors and ADA and parking and all the stuff that a real thriving community depends on, which is use of sidewalks. And, you know, I think the Samuel's is a perfect example. Like, there's places there where they can put their tables, just like they did last, last year, in my opinion. Anyway, thank you for all of this. Thanks for being flexible, and it sounds like there's, it's a, it's a work, you know, a project in the works, so thank you.
Kathleen?
A couple things again. The first is I'm.
Say, introduce yourself for the audience again.
Kathleen Evans. I was very happy, thank you very much, for addressing the enforcement issue. That does sound like it really has some meat to it, so I appreciate that. And my question regarding that is, can you let us know who the code enforcement officer is?
Sure. The name is Yalston Noyes, but you can contact him either directly or through Ryan Daboo of the Building Planning and Zoning Office.
Okay. And my other question regarding that is, does he have a schedule? Will he be out walking around and he will be monitoring things on the weekend when it's busiest?
So he is here.
Tonight, so week.
Yeah, tonight, so week. His schedule has changed with the new fiscal year, and I don't remember what it is.
Saturday, Friday?
We'll, we'll encourage him to come up on Saturdays, but code enforcement, just so you know, is never supposed to enforce, like, they, they don't like take stuff and throw it in the dumpster, right?
Oh, no, right, right.
Yeah, so it's like.
It'd be a procedure.
So, yeah, so he'll witness, he or a police officer or someone will witness what's going on, and then the restaurant owner will get a letter. So, yes.
Oh, yes. I wouldn't expect everything to be disassembled that night.
Right. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So there is a procedure, and I just want to make sure that it's all in place, and that involves a person who. that involves a person who would be monitored.
Yep.
And Kathleen, to also address that, what I mentioned is, our police department will be doing random and frequent foot patrols on the sidewalk.
I appreciate.
And that's going to be on, on schedule, unannounced. They're just going to do it as, you know, their schedule allows throughout the week. And, and they're here every day, seven days a week, till eleven o'clock at night.
More than fair. Thank you very much.
Okay, I would also like to add, writing the resolution, enforcement is listed as a priority, this is a priority for enforcement, and that's in the resolution. So, what you have is sort of, and you can't get much more specific than that in a res-, you know, we always have enforcement discretion. So, we have it in the resolution, that enforcement is, is a priority for this particular issue. And then they have behind the scenes, they've basically talked to their, you know, to the enforcement people and giving them guidance. So, we're getting it as, as really as bulked up as we can.
Yeah, and as I said, it sounded like it had meat to the bone. Thank you very much. I also want to echo, I thought what Victor said, not my idea, but it, it sounded very prudent to me, when you get all the pins in a row, like, why not line up your fault to strike them, instead of just throwing it down the gutter? So, I thought that was certainly worth considering. And lastly, I didn't think of this at all, but I was very curious about Brandy's comment about how this all came to be, and I would love to hear the board respond to that as a resident. That concerns me, and I'm very interested to hear an answer. Thank you.
I'll respond to that, Kathleen. The board did agree to move forward to investigate and study a way to come up with either for or against a proposal for outdoor dining. Right? And so, we did agree to move forward to use our facilities, and we have a procurement policy which we use and follow to be able to do that, to have a call-in task to our engineers to be able to do that. And I did that.
I disagree with that entirely.
So, that's, that's how we executed. We've been discussing this for several months, and that's how the board moved for, forward.
It just seems like, it, I don't know, it just seems like.
Kathleen, the, the rule is that the village board and not a mayor makes contracts in New York State under general municipal law. I had no idea we were doing this. Full stop, full stop.
And my concern to me.
Thank you.
It seems like a very.
I appreciate that. And it's very awkward for me to bring this stuff up. We don't need to behave this way.
Well, I think it's something that, I think to be transparent, it needs to be brought up and.
Thank you, indeed, indeed, I agree.
And all the trustees were shared the communication and the documentation early on, on this whole subject. So, they've had an opportunity to review and comment if they so choose. Yes, John?
Thank you. John Rossi, 53, via the place. I too wanted to express appreciation for the comments of Trustee Neunecker. And I recall the May 12 meeting, and there was an expectation, I believe, of the board that the chamber would be making a presentation that, that night. And I said it because Patrick, the gentleman that I work with at the DDAF committee, I brought him over to introduce him to Trustee Slavy. And to her credit, Trustee Slavy said, you know, we don't really have anything, but Patrick literally did ask you, can I see what's going to be discussed? And you said, you know, we, we're expecting something, but we don't have it. So, I would differ with what you just said, Mr. Mayor, that at the December, at the May 12 meeting, there was a void of information, and it's more that you guys stepped in to fill that void, which did cost us money. And even, you know, the other night, I was sitting in and waiting for Brandy's presentation at the planning board, and, you know, it was, Brandy was kept in the end. I know, and it has nothing to do with Brandy, but I just couldn't help but to think as a taxpayer, because these are billable hours. So, I do appreciate Brandy's comments, and I wish that there was some way to have, to work out the, you know, that funding. Thank you.
Kat?
I just have two questions. Number one, I wanted to bring this up earlier, and I forgot, did the trustees who did not attend the May 23 public comment, did they view the public comment? And number two, the one thing that is not, I didn't hear it, but the outdoor dining resolution from last year had a waiting area for people who were not seated yet, and I didn't hear that addressed this year, and I'm wondering whether that had been considered. Thanks.
Those trustees who asked me for a copy of my notes, got it.
But not the.
No, we, we have, we have, we have the same access to Panda that you have, Pat.
I read the, whatever was posted from the meeting, I read, I read all the material that was posted.
And, and the answer is yes. Notes, can't, have me to review the notes, and also talking extensively to people, asking people questions, what do they think?
And what you're seeing is legislation trying to work here. Any other public comment?
The waiting area, does that consider?
Let me answer my question. Brandy, can you help us with this one? Because we have, the issue is, today we have takeout, and there's people waiting for takeout, right? And there's people who just want to make a meet on this sidewalk, right? And we don't know if they're waiting or not waiting. I'm not sure how to address, because restaurants have waiting today outside their establishment.
Well, and this is also the problem with managing narrow sidewalks in a really vibrant village, right? As you're walking down the street, you stop and you have a conversation with friends. You stop and you get takeout. You stop and you do anything. And so, how do we enforce, oh, like, yeah, Brandy?
Can I say, wait, for you. I believe in humanity a lot. Maybe I'm wrong, it may be, make me guilty of believing in humanity, but I believe there's a step going forward where, if you're walking down the sidewalk and you need a space, I believe that people are going to give you the space that are needed if, if it's, if it's there. So, maybe I'm wrong, but shoot me, but I believe in humanity.
From a, from a technical standpoint, you all know your sidewalks better than I do. We've spent a lot of time on the sidewalks. There are narrow points, there's not a space that's being requested that is designated for queuing while you're waiting for a table. It was discussed, but there's just very limited space. So, basically, the, the design requirements for this proposal, you as the applicant need to take measurements at your location, and if you can't meet these criteria, you're not eligible for the permit. So, as far as moving along the sidewalk, you know, we do want to maintain free flow of traffic along the sidewalk, put traffic along the sidewalk. And I, I know in other communities we've worked in, there's just sort of general conversation, you know, you'll, your table will be ready in 20 minutes, you know, feel free to shop in, in the village while you're waiting for that. Other places that we've worked with have been using apps or little buzzers that they give you when you go to get your reservation. They buzz you, you know to come back, and your table is, is waiting at that time. So, there are a number of options that are open to the restaurant owners to, to help facilitate the seating arrangement. And just one real quick point, I wasn't sure if it was perfectly clear, but there, this is for on sidewalk dining only. There's absolutely no proposal for dining within any of the no parking areas or in any of the on-street parking areas. So, I just want to make sure that's 100% clear.
And I think it's also important to point out that we really worked to have, the only thing that was taking up kind of permanent space on the sidewalk were the actual tables and chairs and the barrier. And anything else, humans, as in waiters and blah, blah, would, waiting areas would all be kind of movable, because they're not there all the time. And so, as I'll say again, this really was a compromise effort to try and just do something for this year while COVID is still with us. And I'm just going to speak personally, I have been immunocompromised in my past, my sister is currently immunocompromised, she testified on May 23. I think we're beginning to forget that COVID is still with us, although Vanessa's making a very good piece of evidence on that it's not. You know, this is a temporary solution for 2022, and we really did everything we could to balance all of the needs that were expressed this entire time. Laws, desires, goals, the existing reality of what we have here in the village. And, and I, I, I think in, in just community spirit, like, let's give it a chance, honestly, and see how it goes, as Rick said. I also believe that we did the budgeting appropriately for this particular expense. And I also believe that it is government's responsibility sometimes to pay for things that only government can do. I get that the chamber really stepped in on this, they don't have any money. I get that they asked us for this, and they did, they asked, they came to us and they asked us for it, and we responded. And sometimes, government has to spend money on things that are good for the common collective. And I don't have a problem with that.
That wasn't my point really at all.
And to that end, there is a fee in this, we can recoup some of those payments, we plan on recouping some of that, but the, we've worked really hard on this compromise. We've worked with the restaurants, we've worked with the disability group, we've worked with our engineers, and I think it's a good compromise.
Okay, we need to move on.
Yeah.
Last one. Chuck Mashan. Hi, I'm Chuck Mashan from Kramer Road on the north side of the village. A couple of questions. I wanted to know the scope of the fees, are they just nominal fees, or are they?
So, $150 per table, maxing out at $500.
Say it again.
$150 per table, maxing out at $500 for the season.
Okay, thank you. And what about provisions about sanitation? You know, like open trash can or something like that, would that be part of the policy or that's up to the goodwill of the restaurant?
There's no sanitation allowed on the street. All trash has to be inside the restaurant.
And my third thing is, is there any element about COVID in any of this, or that's just something we'll just wait to see what happens with the.
In terms of.
Pandemic? In terms of crowds, or in terms of masking, or in terms of anything else? I know, I know, things are pretty open.
I mean, we don't have.
So, there's nothing in this regulation that addresses any COVID possibility?
No, and we have, as a village, we've never had any authority to address masking. So, we've encouraged masking, but we've never had the authority to actually enforce any of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Board, Rick, I thought you, did you want to say anything?
No. Well, I guess I'll take over discussion. I, I think that there's an expression, you either need to fish or cut bait. My grandfather had much Earthery expression there, but I think we can always come up with another question or another, another probability, another sign, another thing. But it seems to me that the major issues have been addressed in this plan, which is really the issue of accessibility and keeping the, keeping the sidewalks flowing. And I think that's been addressed. And I think at a certain point, we need to move ahead to find out what's going to happen. We can talk about this endlessly, and we can speculate about this endlessly, but the only way we're going to know if this is actually a workable plan or not is to implement it. And basically, this gives us a summer and a fall to see if this is a workable plan, to see if it needs modification. And I'd like to do this so that we can learn from it, because we can, I can come up with a million scenarios in a million different ways, but until we put it into practice and see how it works, we're not really going to have the feel for, is this appropriate and viable for Rhinebeck? So, in the spirit of flexibility, experimentation, I would like to see this go forward.
So, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing sidewalk dining for 2022, and I will read the resolution into record. Whereas during 2020 and 2021, numerous restaurants in the village of Rhinebeck sought to and did establish outdoor dining to continue to offer services during the COVID-19 pandemic, and to protect the safety of their patrons and assure the confidence of the patrons in the safety of the dining experience. And whereas the availability of outdoor dining became an important asset to preserve the village's commercial vitality and ensure the confidence of their patrons in the safety of their dining experience during the pandemic. And whereas certain of the village restaurants have no available adjacent land on which to provide outdoor dining, other than the sidewalk in front of their facade, and therefore providing outdoor dining on an adjacent sidewalk. And whereas, in addition to preserving economic activity and the opportunity for dining, the availability of outdoor service, including sidewalk dining, added to the perception of a lively and vibrant downtown as part of the village's ambiance. And whereas many of the village restaurants have expressed an interest in continuing outdoor dining in 2022, and whereas some of the village restaurants have applied for approval to offer outdoor dining on adjacent private property through the site plan approval process in the village zoning code. And whereas certain of the restaurants, whose only adjacent land is public sidewalks, have also requested the village board to be permitted to offer outdoor dining. And whereas the village board finds that outdoor dining, including sidewalk dining, is an important addition to the village economy, ambiance, quality of life, and improves the safety of the village and helps assure diners of that approved safety during the continued threat of COVID-19. And whereas the village board desires to provide the opportunity of outdoor dining in 2022 to restaurants, whose only available adjacent land is a sidewalk in front of their facade, and to ensure the attractiveness and joyability and convenience of sidewalk dining to diners and pedestrians. And whereas on May 23, 2022, the village board heard comment from public on sidewalk dining, including the benefits to the village and its business and residents and conditions on such dining to reduce the potential for adverse impacts. And whereas pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECCER, and regulations adopted thereunder, the village board has reviewed the potential for adverse environmental impact from permitting sidewalk dining during 2022, including reviewing an environmental assessment form identifying such potential impact, consulting with the village engineer and hearing the comments of the public. Now there, be it resolved.
And determine those type directions.
Pardon?
And determine those type directions.
Oh, and yes, I'm sorry, I didn't. I don't have the update in front of me. And it's, it's a type-two action in SECCER, thank you. Now therefore be resolved that the village board of the village of Rhinebeck hereby finds a sidewalk dining as provided hereunder will not result in any significant adverse environmental impact, pursuant to SECCER determines that no environmental impact statement is necessary to undertake the action in this resolution, and is therefore determined to be a type-two action. Be it further resolved that the village board of the village of Rhinebeck hereby authorizes the building department to issue permission for restaurants to offer outdoor dining adjacent side, out, to offer outdoor dining adjacent sidewalks until November 1st, 2022, pursuant to the terms and conditions in the attachment A, heretofore and upon their application for such permission on form provided by the village substantially as shown in attachment B. And be it further resolved that to ensure the safety and convenience of the public, the terms and conditions of Schedule A and any permits granted hereunder shall be strictly enforced, and such enforcement should, excuse me, a lot to read, shall, shall be a priority. And be it further resolved that the applicants, application fees scheduled, prescribed in Schedule A should replace any otherwise applicable requirement permitting for, permit these to provide additional off-street parking or additional fees in lieu of parking during 2022. And be it further resolved that the village board should review the experience resulting from the permitted activities in considering legislation to permit sidewalk dining after 2022. Do I have a second?
Seconds.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Okay, I'm going to call for a vote by, by roll. I'll start with Vanessa. And I.
That's I.
Trustee Lewis?
Aye.
Brandy? Trustee Slavy?
Aye.
Mayor Bassett?
Aye.
Therefore be it passed by a four-to-one vote to start offering outdoor dining to the village of Rhinebeck. Thank you all for your participation and involvement in this, in this very, in this process that's been under discussion from place and time. Okay. Next, I'm sorry to keep our other. Next, I'm sorry to keep our other guests waiting so long. I truly am. But we are going to have now a discussion on Grassmere and the water main update by GPI.
Good evening, everyone. Brandy Nelson, Tyra Bond. So just by way of background, the village of Rhinebeck Water System serves the manor house at Grassmere and has for many, many years. There is a proposal, as some of you may be aware of, to develop the Grassmere property. That property is located in the town, but as I said, is in the village water service area. The development proposal, and there are representatives from the development team here this evening, will require more water than just the manor house would have on its own. And so with work undertaken by trustee Nunaker and the village board over the last, it's been several years, right? Several years of discussion, there's a proposal for a water service agreement to provide water to Grassmere that has been developed with village council, as I said, with trustee Nunaker, and with ourselves as village engineer, providing technical support. What is proposed in addition to the water service agreement, which lays out terms and conditions and rates and such, are distribution system improvements for that service. Grassmere requires a six-inch water service. I believe the service now is two-inch off of a four-inch main. And so in reviewing the distribution system along Huntington, at Knollwood and Arnett, out to the Grassmere property with the developers, engineer Mr. O'Connor, what has been decided in the agreement, or outlined in the agreement for our discussion this evening, is an upgrade of any of the four-inch water mains in the village system to six inches. In doing that water system upgrade, the pipe will actually be replaced at several locations between Grassmere and along the alignment, which runs up Mill Road to Route 9 to Asher, and then along Huntington, again, where it is currently a four-inch main, terminating it, as I said, Arnett and Knollwood and Huntington.
So in addition, anybody who's along that path will get a new service line from the water main. There's a corporation stop, then the service line goes to a curb box, you're going to get a new curb box and reconnect along that path that she's describing.
And several hydrants that are currently not functioning well, or of a very old construction will be replaced. So there'll be some water service work that will be occurring. Tonight, Mr. Nick Ward-Willis from Keenan Bean, the developer's attorney, and Mr. Josh O'Connor from GPI, the developer's consultant, are here to answer questions you may have about the water service agreement and the proposed water distribution system improvements. One of the actionable items for tonight is that those water main improvements do require a permit from the county health department. Because those are improvements to the village's system, the village needs to sign that permit application. So we would propose, after working with the applicant's consultant, that if the village's standards are met, we would let you guys know that it's okay to sign the application, and then the applicant will forward the application materials on to the county health department for review. County health department may have other comments and require changes, but at that point, that would be on the applicant to make those and then keep a surprise with those. In addition...
Well, I think it's fair to say that the agreement is pretty much worked out with our attorney and their attorney, and the drawings are an exhibit. So the drawings are not totally complete yet, but I mean, I have enough confidence to at least let them get started on making an overture to the board of health.
These drawings?
Yeah.
Yeah, for instance, there may be, as we discussed in our meetings, that maybe not all lines are where they are, what they say they are, and there may be some discovery process as we go through, especially on Huntington and Arnett, where we believe it's six-inch Huntington, on Huntington's and Asher, where we believe it's six-inch. We don't know for sure. So there is possibility of discovery here yet to be done. And if that's the case, those lines will have to be upgraded to then the six-inch line along that path.
Right. So again, two actionable items. One would be to endorse the village entering into the agreement, if everyone is comfortable with it, and then secondarily authorizing the mayor to sign the permit application for the distribution system upgrades.
So I think, yeah, one more question. The other, schedule for the public's information in terms of when this construction would happen and what the length of time it would be?
So again, Josh O'Connor retained, I work for GPI retained by Grassmere House as a consultant on the project and licensed professional engineer in the state of New York. To answer your first question, schedule is as soon as possible. We really want to get this work underway as far as the construction starts. Duration, it's going to be in the three to six a month range. And I say that to couch it conservatively. We would hope it to be done within three months. But again, record-keeping for the existing water system isn't necessarily finite, and we have to leave a little wiggle room in case we find things that are, you know, unknowns in the ground. So that said, longest duration would be six months, hopefully completed in three. It also hinges somewhat on when the construction start happens. We're not going to work in the winter. So, you know, the end of the, you know, following an approval, the end of the construction date might be pushed out a little bit for the favorable construction season.
So one of the questions we had when we went through the design was, especially on Knollwood, Knollwood being one of our better streets?
Okay.
In terms of, because that line will be upgraded from, I think it was from Violet up to Arnett?
Yes.
There was an upgrade that would have to be a trench along there, that rather than a trench and a patch on a trench be done, a full street be repaid for there? Is that an open discussion that we had, this question we had when we reviewed the design?
It is something that I could discuss, I think, in that case. And it is something we did talk about with Tom, you know, the, are my client at a point in time. Like, in that area, there are some of the streets that are in better condition than others. You know, our simple approach to it, as far as it's detailed on our drawings, is for a restoration of that trench. I think a re-top, right, you know, a re-top is probably appropriate. A full-depth reconstruction of the road, I wouldn't expect is. But, you know, in the areas of work, a uniform, clean surface, I think is a reasonable request. I would have to get Tom to agree to that. Obviously, I can't negotiate on his behalf. But it is something we did discuss in the past, and I think that's a reasonable consideration.
We did find, when we did the previous transmission line upgrades, that all the trench paths and then the curb, from the curb stops out, created a, a rather on-uniform road to be able to travel bicycle along, except for the...
Mr. Mayor, my guess is the construction operation itself, if the road is in any unstable or deteriorated state, is also going to do damage that would need to be repaired, in which case, you know, a re-top is probably appropriate. I want to address something Brandy did mention. She said that she would ask for authorization to, for the village to sign the permit on behalf of our applicant for the county department of health. My understanding is we may need to do a DOH 348 form that goes to the state as well. And in that case, your board would need to also, or the village would also need to be the applicant. So just so that's on the record, we would also ask for permission to have that form signed on behalf of our client as well.
And obviously, it's in the agreement that we are required to sign all necessary approvals for you guys to keep moving forward, so.
Yes.
I just think this should be touched on. We have the ability to make enough water at our plant, it's sized appropriately, so that we can supply all of this water.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yes, I recite the numbers if you want to go into the...
No, it's okay. It should be clear that we have capacity. We have capacity to supply this water.
Our peak daily demand would represent, I believe, our max daily demand, not peak, like, the broadest expected demand would not touch 2%, would not even create a 2% increase in the overall demand on the 2 million gallon tank that's on the... It sounds like a large number, the ultimate build-out being about 45,000 gallons per day. That seems very significant. The district uses a considerable amount of water in a day, and that is a drop in a large bucket.
Yeah, but I think that should be just, I just wanted to add that we have the capacity.
For the record as well, thank you.
And also, in consideration, since this is in the town and not in the village, there is a fee for the water.
Yes.
Right? Which is at 1.25%, as proposed in the proposal of what we normally charge the village residents.
That's right. It's 125% of the normal use rate for use of this type.
And the water line upgrade that they're willing to do is, it's a win-win for everybody. It's the equivalent of a very large hookup fee.
You know, the Grassmere House is now served by the village, as you stated. There's a four-inch main that goes right down Mill Road, you know, and a two-inch service to the manor house. The water that actually is delivered to the manor house, and that's why we can't contemplate reuse, and we can't contemplate the four-inch, we expect that the lines that are in the road are aged and considerably calcified and have very little throughput. We expect these improvements will benefit the community at large. Anyone who's connected in that local area should see a good beneficial increase in both volume and pressure at their residences.
But again, my concern for that stretch on Huntington?
Yes.
We don't know the condition.
And again, note about the service laterals, we have a good idea where they are. We'll find that out in the field, but all of those service laterals, as mentioned, will be new to the property line, anywhere we're proposing those upgrades. And then addressing the fire hydrants. The request was to provide fire hydrants that are outside of our work area, but in the line of the high, in the line of the main that we'll, that we're not touching, where there's, it's underserved for fire protection. So there are areas where there aren't hydrants, which there would be if this system was built today. So there are two hydrants in specific that are being added so that the system conforms with the current standards for fire protection. We're adding three, actually, and we propose one on Route 9 near the cemetery. And then we're leaving a stub there. So at some point in the future, the village or another applicant might want to extend water service north into the village. That stub will be there, the hydrant could be relocated, and that main could be utilized for the village's use at some point in the future.
Any questions?
Slightly off-topic, but Nick and I went through a bit of a fire drill last week, and I apologize again for the greatness of lateness of the fire drill. But at one point before all of this was negotiated, and I believe a fairly good deal for everybody involved, there was a conversation about the applicant building some sidewalks along Route 9 between Mill Road and Asher?
Asher.
And Asher, on the other side of the street. So there's current existing sidewalks on the east side of the street. This would be a sidewalk that would run alongside, next to the cemetery. We agreed that the current negotiation with the water project was enough, but I did, my main concern was, for those of you who don't know, the Grassmere proposal is a new hotel with 45 rooms. And so my, the main concern that I was worried about, given everything that we're thinking about in very real time with the conference planning committee, is 45 new cars coming in to the village on a Saturday night, trying to find parking because they want to take advantage of our restaurants. I was assured by the applicant that the amenities being provided at this hotel involve personalized shuttles?
Correct. It'll be 40 Nicholas Ward-Willis with Keenan Bean for the applicant, Grassmere House in Mench Grassmere. The project includes 48 bedrooms, and the part of the project we haven't completed the full operational requirements, but one of the aspects that we anticipate providing, and they've provided other similar facilities, is onsite shuttles. It would be project is designed that when you drive in, you're going to drive and have the southern entrance park your car, and then you're not touching that vehicle. You will be shuttled about through an electric vehicle onsite. You will also have your own, what's called a forum, a concierge, who will be your shuttle driver, who will be able to shuttle you into the village as appropriate to drop you off and pick you up on fall.
Right, so it sounds like a spectacular place to go visit. But my main concern was that there weren't going to be 45 new cars trying to park in the village, and I have been assured by the applicant that there will not be. And moreover, the shuttles that are being used are run, are electric vehicles, so that solves the pollution problem as well. We did have a conversation, though, at any point, as the village is working on Route 9, we're talking about a bunch of things going on with Route 9 with the Department of Transportation, new potential crosswalks, some traffic calming issues, na, 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 that the applicant would like to be very much part of those conversations to make, to make sure that their guests have the ability to walk into the village if they so desire. So this is the beginning of a long conversation, I would imagine, between the village and Grassmere House.
Yes, we look forward to participating, being a part of those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. Vanessa?
My question was, are there any other additional new customers being added? Or is this all just existing within the service area already? Are there any other neighbors that are now able to get our village water?
I believe that any eligible renter or user in the area of work that we are proposing is already connected. Whether or not a future applicant, you know, wanted to connect to the infrastructure that is being dedicated, you know, it's being constructed by us but dedicated to the village, that's not in our control at that point. That's, you know, but at this point in time, any of, to the best of our knowledge, water is served to everyone in the area of work now.
And there's a restriction that Grassmere cannot sell water to someone, to a different entity or individual outside of the subject person?
It is onsite use only.
Yeah.
Got it. So the straightforward answer is no. But it wouldn't be ours to prohibit future connections, and that's up to the village, obviously.
Sounds like a little negotiated.
Yeah.
We appreciate working with the trustees and the staff and Brandy on getting this through, so thank you for your patience and work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept the agreement between the village of Rhinebeck for the sale of water to the Mench Grassmere LLC, under the conditions that we talked about.
Yes.
In addition to what was here, in terms of the re-top, I would like to have an answer on that.
So Gary, the subject to probably the Schedule B being complete, so that will be on the schedule, because Brandy's still hashing out some fine, some fine points on that.
Okay. All right, so, option B, you said?
Schedule B.
Schedule B.
Yeah.
It's the exhibit, which is really the drawings. When we got into more detailed drawings, we needed to get it right, because we're having so many details in there, then if it's not in there, then it's, the details that are not in there are not part of the deal.
Correct. Well, that's one of the examples we talked about, I believe, right? Since there's discoveries to be made.
Yeah. There are, and for the record, there are also, you know, we show a somewhat generic, pardon me, we show a somewhat generic meter pit and bulb, right? This is going to be, this is proposed at the property line, but we have not coordinated the fine detail of what the appropriate meter, an appropriate meter pit is for the water district.
And I believe that's helped our chief water plant operator to give you a...
And we do anticipate, you know, modifying that detail. So there are some changes we expect. And backing up, just, we have submitted drawings for a conceptual review to DOT.
Oh, DOT.
To DOT for the work in the right of way on Route 9. And... You know, obviously, there's traffic control plans, we have to put what we do have planned done already, but we've also shared the documents with David Pearson at the county already as well. And, and he gave us a head nod on the general scope of the project. We don't anticipate any significant changes going forward. So the Schedule B as it, as it stands, I think, is, is reasonable. If this was being proposed on private property, it could go to bid today. It, you know, but it's not. So we, we do expect, you know, jurisdictions to have some comments, but we don't expect anything to be scope-changing or substantive.
Understood. Is there any motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Grant. Any other discussion?
Just a quick, the motion is to accept the water, or to accept the draw.
As defined in Exhibit B.
No.
When Exhibit B gets funded. Subject to Brandy's approval of, of Exhibit B.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was that, did that motion also get the authorization from Mayor Simon, please?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brandon.
Okay. We're going to stay on water for a while. Grant, we have an engineering proposal for the upgrade to our water plant.
From Delaware Engineering, for the, it's a proposal to do the engineering for the EFC project. The EFC, we got a $3 million grant, so this is the engineering proposal to do the engineering for the project. Last year, what, how long ago, Karen, was it, when we passed the bond resolution to get all this started?
I'm going to say November. I may get wrong.
It was almost a $6 million bond resolution. We, we pledged to bring the price down, and $3 million grant is a really good way to do that, so.
So now it's $3 million.
And they also pledged $250,000 out of our water plant balance.
We did.
To go forward for, as part of this project.
$73,000.
Well, I think, I think it was $250,000.
Yeah. So do you want to go over the proposal?
Sure. So, I think...
Robert Flores with Delaware Engineering.
That's right. I'm Robert Flores with Delaware Engineering. So we'll go, I'll go through the background just super fast, if everyone's details ask me, right? Ask me, right? But, yes, we did a engineering study report for both water and wastewater plants and systems. We helped you apply for WIA grant, six point, which included bond resolution seeker, that was last year, submitted in November. You were awarded the WIA grant, which is $3 million. Bond resolution was for 6.4. So now you're going to, you, you've been awarded the grant, you signed the paperwork saying that you want, you're going to pursue the project, and one of the steps is to finalize the engineering agreement and authorize design. So that's the, that's the step we're in right now, and that's the proposal you have in front of you, is to authorize us to start the design of the 6.4 million dollar project.
So Robert, that was my main question, because the WIA grant is a 60-40 grant, and we were hoping for 60%, you know, the 60% of the 6.4 million, which we didn't get, we got 3 million.
There's a $3 million cap.
Yeah. Well, wasn't, I thought it was, all right, I didn't realize that. You gotta remember being involved in discussions, that we said if we don't get this, we will consider trying to maybe, you know, look at the design to not be 6.4 million, to maybe reduce something plus.
Reduce the scope of the work.
The scope of the work. Is that still, that's part of the work that you're going to do here?
So in, in the, during the detailed design, you know, we'll find, and thus, we'll, you know, we'll get into the details and see what, you know, through the direction of your, you know, your water operator and, and the board, if there's something that's, you know, if it's a requirement for water treatment, you need to do it. If there, if it's more of a wish than a, than a true need, you know, for the next 40 years to have a reliable water treatment plant, then, you know, you'll be able to make that decision, right? Is, is doing X worth, you know, so much money?
So there's some substantial amount of the items on the, from the engineering report that are redundant, and once they get started with their engineering, they're going to choose one path or the other, so a lot, some of those expensive items will fall off. That alone will bring, bring down the cost.
Yeah. So I just wondered if that was part of the scope of work for, for this. And just for everybody's information, I don't know if it was mentioned, that this is for engineering services not to exceed $425,000.
Correct.
And that's part of the overall cost of the project?
That's right. That's included in the 6.4.
Okay.
425,000. 425,000.
It takes it through, going out to bid and finding a bidder.
Yeah. There was, there was, just to summarize, and there's preliminary engineering phase for 25,000, a design phase for 390,000, and then the bidding for 10,000. And then the construction administration, construction observation, and startup services or TBD after.
Right.
Right.
So ideally, we get this overall project down to 5 million, which would put, which would be the 60-40.
That's a magic number to me.
Okay.
Maximize the grant, am I right?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm going to have to haggle with these guys to keep it down to 5 million.
Is there a limit? We had, kind of a dumb question, from my part, I'm sorry. Since we got 3 million, if we lower it to 5 million and 40%...
60% of eligible problem.
Of, of 6, that's, so ultimately, that's what we would get.
It's 3 million or 60% of eligible.
No, no, thank you. That's the clarification.
So ideally, we don't want to go below 5 million?
If you want to fully leverage your grant.
Yes.
We want to fully leverage the grant.
Right.
Right. Are you optimistic you can get to that number?
We, we'll make the number work for you, but there's, you're going to have to make some choices, right? For example, one of the things like Brett mentioned was, there's baffles in, in the clear well. Now, by doing the UV disinfection, you might be able to just drop the baffles and safely there, right?
That is actually, you drop 500, 550,000?
And then, of course, we all know that inflation has gone, it's crazy, right?
Yeah.
So those million cap, yeah, right? But you, you'll have the choices to make, basically, right? For example, there's costs about upgrading the electrical service of the water plant, which was built in 1968. So if you're going to spend $5 million, do you want to keep, you know, an old water, the thing that keeps holding running? Do you want to upgrade it or leave it, right? So, these are the tough choices.
Yeah, it's the inflation part, because I was talking to somebody just recently that had a $150,000 project, and it's now 500,000. So we're not sure.
Your cost of steel has literally doubled in two years. Yeah.
And it'll be not so bad. If it takes 15 months for us to go out to bid, then maybe things will settle down by then. I don't want to go out to bid right now.
No, oh, God, no.
I just also make note that this also covers upgrades to our storage tank.
That's right.
Yeah. So the water treatment plant, which is down on Slate Dock Road in Reincliffe, is the main source of the improvements, but we have a 2 million gallon storage tank up on Hiley that will also get some improvements as well.
Some aeration, so the water's circulating.
Oh.
It's, there's literally, where you can have almost like a pump at the bottom, and then you have like a shower at the top.
Someone mentioned earlier, you have a 2 million gallon water tank, but you use about 300,000 gallons a day.
400,000 a day is what we use, yeah.
And you're, and the water tank is at the far end of the system, so what you use doesn't even make it to the water. So the water that actually comes back out of the water tank is less than that, right? So the turnover in your water tank is, is a long period of time, so, which affects your water quality. So by, by stirring it, it's, improves the water quality and has a lot of other benefits.
This was actually a recommendation from two years ago, when we had a water problem issue, and we had to end up flushing lines frequently to be able to clear the lines. We were doing it, and the recommendation, I think we had a bid of, I don't know, $100,000 to put this aeration system in. We decided to couple that in with this package, rather than do it separately.
This way you face, you know, 60% of the cost.
Right.
Yeah.
Give me a word.
No, sorry.
In hindsight, yeah.
Okay.
So, by the way, this is word for word, pretty much, the one that we just did with the sewer in March, so, except for the dollar figures in the scope of work.
And there's the part, there's a part four that's not included in your packet, just because it's like 60 pages, but that's the boilerplate that's required by the state.
By the state.
For, for product, for contracts that are funded with the grant. So that you don't get to edit, so, but your lawyer is...
Our name is...
We can still approve it, subject to Rich's review, but, yeah, that's fine.
That's all the non, that's all the non, what's about bribery and terrorism and all that stuff.
Yes. All right. We have a motion, we have a second, had discussion. All in favor? Vanessa, you have any questions? I'm sorry, you have to...
Yeah, I had, I had one question. Is there going to be a solution to the solids, like the river, Hudson River solids that we filter out of the water treatment plant?
So, it's not really part of the scope of this?
It's not?
No. I talked to Randy Alstad, what is the city of Poughkeepsie?
Yeah, town of Poughkeepsie.
It's such a production to do. He says, we basically have two treatment plants. We have one for, for water, and then we treat sludge. It's a big...
Sludge from the water?
Yeah, from the backwash. He loved our lagoon. He said, you're so lucky to have a lagoon.
We're lucky, we're not, we're lucky, but we're not lucky.
That's one night from an anecdote.
It's a mixed blessing, our lagoon.
So anyway.
But this does not include replacing the lagoon.
Correct. Current land is to keep the lagoon.
Right.
Does it include, I know we have an issue with, with the actual access road and the issue of getting trucks down there. Does it include, like, rethinking the access, or is it just the water plant itself?
It's just the plant itself.
Yeah, if there's, if there's an engineering solution that needs to be done, that's, that's in there, right? But I guess it's news to me about improving the road.
Well, it's, there's a hairpin. So one thing we talked about is like, semis actually will back up into the brush.
For delivery.
Yeah, and we thought about putting some item four down in there or something, so they could, instead of doing the hairpin, they back up and then, and then turn up.
Well, it's also, it's issue of the hairpin, but it's also an issue of sea level rise. And on the lower part of the road, if, and I believe it will happen, I believe it will, and it's just a matter of...
Access to the plant.
Right. Will be cut off if we have another event like Hurricane Sandy with the culmination of sea level rise, the access to the road is, to the plant will be cut off.
We can get there.
And that was identified, you know, several years ago, and we're studying on the sea level rise.
Okay.
And it's on our list to try to figure out.
It's on the list. It was like year 30 or something.
Is there...
It's all our priorities, I guess, right?
Is there like an alternate way that we can build a road down there?
Yeah, well, yes, there is.
We could make a cog road curve.
No, no, there is, no, there is an alternate way that was discussed that bypasses that hairpin turn, but it hasn't been engineered or figured out.
It's super steep, like, yeah. I was joking about the cog, but it's really good.
There's a path that can get us there.
Okay, so I, I guess my question is, with sea level rise and all the rest of it, we're not pouring 5 to 6.4 million dollars into a water plant that's going to be under water in 20 years, are we?
No.
No, the sea, the plant is not impacted.
Okay.
And in fact, if you remember, several years ago, we actually made improvements to our pumps that pull the water in, that we moved all the electrical up to the second floor, and we seal around them to prevent water penetration, because that was the area, the most critical area that was exposed to sea level rise. So we made those corrections.
Yeah.
As part of the study that we did on sea level rise.
That was our first 20-year look ahead.
Okay.
This, most of this is a cap plan for years one through 15, or years one through 10, I think.
Right.
Capitalization.
Again, your needs are, you know, are many, and your budget is limited, right? So, so it's always, it's always priority, right?
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just had a, the board liked to authorize to transfer the agreement on 300,000 fund balance from water to the water upgrade project, and it helps us start this project.
Without going into detail.
So, yeah, let's make that another motion.
Yes.
Can we make that another motion? Should we, do you want to do it in front of this one, so we have the money to pay for it before we approve it? Good idea.
No, it doesn't matter if we're going to...
All right. Well, we already, we have a first and second. All right. I'd like to make, we have a motion, all in favor of approving the professional service agreement for the water treatment plant. Say aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay. Second motion, to approve the transfer of the, it was 300,000?
Yeah.
Right, 300,000, as agreed to, out of fund balance to cover the cost for our, so we can start paying for the engineering services, while we're waiting for the grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So passed. Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
The EFC does want to see the signed agreement really soon, so, I mean, yesterday, right? Don't they?
They, they reminded us about it at the end of last week, that we also, yeah.
So just out, out of context, you mentioned the, what really started all of this was our agreement with Douglas County Wastewater Authority. We still need to close that out.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, we've been open for a long time, and we're waiting on payment of 28,000, I believe, to, to close that.
We had a meeting with them a couple weeks ago, and we have a shortlist, and Karen's been providing an awful lot of information to that.
I did. I wish I knew that they wanted the past five years, because I did the past two, and I had to split it out into vendors and accounts, and now I have to go back and capture three more prior years.
Yeah, unfortunately, they won't see their, they want to see your, your last five years, but not in the order that you keep them in your books, in the order that they...
Right.
They want them on their form.
Yeah, so you've been translating your numbers.
So I created a spreadsheet as per their, their guidelines, but I just did the past two years. I actually did the one prior, just to put it in there, and then they came back and said they want five years.
All right. I just would like to...
We're, we're going, it's been pending for a long time. I know, but they, they really sat on stuff. It was not fair.
Okay.
But anyway.
Next on the agenda, the compost feasibility.
Thank you.
Vanessa, do you want to talk to the compost feasibility study?
Yeah. So, as you all know, we're doing our composting pilot, which is a drop-off program, and it's going really well. We recently surveyed our participants, and, and only 3% of respondents said that they're not that into it. Everybody else is really liking it, so it's going very well. I'm, at this point, looking into what comes after our pilot. And as we all know, government can move slowly, so I want to start planning now. And as we all know, government can move slowly, so I wanna start planning now. In May, there was announced a new grant specifically for municipalities that want to create composting sites as solutions to food waste locally. And this is through the D E C. And what's compelling about the grant is that it's a twenty five seventy five match, which is even better than the typical climate smart grant, which are typically fifty fifty match. So what I'm proposing to the board is a compost facility on the highway department property. And we did do a site visit with the D E C office that regulates such facilities and it was a positive site visit. And I'm excited about this idea because we could actually expand the program to include more households in the village and and restaurants. So I wanted to have a little bit of a discussion here to open this idea to the board. And, you know, state my intention to try to secure this funding through grant money to try to pay for the construction costs of developing a site. The site would be approximately ten thousand square foot concrete pad with a pavilion style roof on top of it. It would have electricity electricity running to this to power a aerated static pile system, A S P, in known in the biz as A S P. This is the type of processing that was recommended in our feasibility study with Houshun Prevention Institute. Because it is very low labor. The forcing of air heights, air with the piles such that you don't have to do a lot of main turning of the of the composting material. The other compelling reason to do this project property is because we already have mulch there, so that really serves as our grounds. The typical recipe is one part food waste, two part grounds. Or some form of carbon such as wood chips or or straw, some other type of material that's carbonish. And I also like this idea because we we have the land, it is somewhat underutilized. And this would give us an opportunity to redesign that area of the property. There's a couple tricky things about this property though, as we know. We have the landsman hill right there. And the D E C does require two hundred foot setback from wetlands or landsman hill, as well as any other existing buildings. So the site plan would require really strategic strategic replacements, the concrete pad. So it's two hundred foot away from any of those things. The other requirement that I see in my mind is a way for the public to come and drop off food scraps in such a way that's safe. Isn't going to have people coming in the road and around the entire property. So I'm proposing a redesign of the Violet Hill entryway. So that there would be turnaround gates and fencing and a food scrap drop off bin there. Rather than having those come all the way into the property. So maybe I'll talk there, maybe we can discuss a little bit. And I'd love to answer any questions.
So I'll just let me jump in first because Vanessa, because you and I have had discussion on the cost for this. And as of today, as evening, late afternoon, there's been some reductions in the eight thousand two hundred dollars in terms of doing, working with Time Bond for this. And I know you and Karen were gonna meet. Did you have a chance to discuss how and where we would pay?
Right, okay, so if if the board is into this idea, how we would proceed is is this. We would request kind of to actually design the site and then what the site would be. And then put together a budget for what the construction cost would be. Those would be two pieces along with my narrative of of this plan. That would go towards a grant application. So in other words, we need to know what we're gonna build and how much it's gonna cost in order to go for a grant to ask for the money to do that. So Randy initially gave me, you know, really nice write up, but it was about eight grand and I said, that's that's we don't have that in the budget. So she very kindly brought it down to thirty five hundred. And I do have two thousand dollars, I mentioned to Karen, in in the compost facility budget. But Karen, I don't think we have a back and forth about that at this point. Where to find another fifteen hundred?
Yeah, I didn't know you wanted to to take it out of some of the other line items that were in your climate. Department one that is.
Yeah. I mean, I would I would be willing to do that. I would I'd like to move on this grant because. It's a it's a first in, first out. So if we can be first in line, then we have a better chance of getting the money that we want to ask for. And also, like, it it takes time to move through the grant process and then it actually takes time, the season, to construct, so.
Highway have any money?
No.
Right. Does planning and zoning have any money?
Hey Vanessa, what what did can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
What did we decide about the the wastewater households?
Right, so.
Into this facility, correct?
I think we learned a lot in in looking into this site for food waste composting. I've learned a lot. One is this two hundred foot setback and so in looking at the wastewater treatment plant, if we were to try to compost there.
It pushes us off, yeah.
It's pretty tight, right?
Yeah, there's no fill.
And then the other thing I've learned is in terms of the D E C regulation and stuff and stuff. For food waste, there's different tiers of oversight and permitting. And what I'm proposing in this project would not be the most stringent, high level in terms of testing and and that sort of thing because it would be a smaller operation. When you start talking about biosolids, you're automatically into the world of like a lot of a lot of paperwork, a lot of regulation. And it's handled very differently than food waste bringing this people back.
So it probably won't be compatible.
No, I don't think so.
Because that there would be an awful lot of money saved there if we could.
There would be and it just. Maybe there's a different solution for biosol. I don't think it's gonna be an intermingle with our food waste at this point.
There will be a lot of trucks coming through the village to to move the to move the waste from one place to another. Or that was to bring the smudge down to down the wastewater, right?
Yeah. We can we thought we could get our own wood chips from landscapers and stuff if we did it on the waste water.
Here we have the brown material on site.
Right, because the scraps are coming to the to the wood.
If I can just add to what Vanessa was saying, there are different tiers of regulation of the D E C for composting facilities. If you're if you're a school and you're gonna have a tiny little compost pile of kitchen scraps, they don't regulate that. At the level that the village would do food scraps and yard waste, that's a registration. So the D E C just wants to know that you've got the facility at that location. And that you're meeting their design criteria, similar to the sidewalk discussion we had earlier. If you add different materials like biosolids, then you're into the you need a permit. And when you have a permit, there's a higher regulatory burden. Both initially with your site design, much more stringent site design, much higher level of management. And then regular testing and reporting that you have to do back to the state. So it's it's just it's a becomes a much more complex operation. The the food and yard waste registration is kind of a sweet spot for municipality, allows you to deal with the waste that are producing your community most commonly.
And we already and we already do yard waste.
Yeah, I mean, you guys here are half a step ahead already.
So my my only, Randy, you can probably answer this question. My other concern was the access off of Violet Hill. And that road that we use, temporary road to act to put trucks into. We tried to use the bridge, but the bridge is currently in a state of not being able to be used because of some flooding. So we would need to use, as Vanessa described, have a drop off of Violet Hill, which is a county road, right?
That's correct.
And, you know, we could do all this design work and they could say no, right?
Yeah, in the original proposal that I gave Vanessa, you know, we were gonna do a full feasibility with a couple of different alternatives, plus a permitting matrix. To evaluate, you know, add different alternatives, what permits get triggered. You know, a threshold question that would happen even in our reduced scope that I talked with Vanessa about this afternoon. Is a call to the to the county highway department and just say, you know, that they've got an existing entrance. Will you allow it to be a change in use or will we be required to make some upgrades? I have looked at that insurance. I don't know what the current permit status is of it. There are different levels of entrance permitting based on volume of use. And so I'm not sure what it was initially designed to, but that would be one of the threshold items that we would evaluate.
So we would know early on.
Yes, and I think that would be something we would, you know, that would help us make a decision pretty quickly.
Vanessa, what's the minimum and maximum number of households that can participate in a facility of this size?
Well, in terms of the the D E C regulations, I think it's a maximum of twenty five thousand tons of food waste annually.
Okay, that's a lot.
Randy?
Yeah, it was two thousand a month, so.
And how many households does that represent?
It it varies.
Way more than we need. That's that's way more of a capacity than we would need.
So.
And the other thing, the other thing is I I did reach out to Elizabeth and Cynthia, the town, to see if they had any interest in this. As you know, Gary and Elizabeth have been looking at compost solutions years ago, five years ago. And and she wrote wrote right back to me and said, yes, she's interested. She can speak for the whole town board. But they might be interested being, you know, to help with with funding such that their town residents. Who don't have otherwise needs to compost might be able to access. So that, you know, I think there's work to be done to figure out how this would work for us here in the village, of course, as our. But there is a potential collaboration there with the town as well if we have excess capacity.
So the schedule, just just to remind everybody what the schedule is. If we move forward, the schedule is to complete the feasibility study by July nineteenth of this year. And then complete the grant application by August sixteenth. And as Vanessa said, it's a rolling grant. So at that time, we would be in a position to apply for the grant. And then we won't know until we until we get it. I I think the question the board has to think about is, do we want to get into this business? That's the first question. We've been discussing it for a long time in terms of trying to pilot this, move it forward. Do we want to be in the business of having residents drop off com- waste, food scraps, that we could turn into bio degradables? And give soil back to to them?
Well, Vanessa, you and I had a great chat about this and, you know. If over the course of the next ten, twenty years, New York State or Douglas County comes up with an ultimate solution. Worst case scenario, we're left with a ten thousand square foot. Concrete pad with a pavilion over it, right?
And an electrical system.
That has an electrical system in it, so. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the just to to throw out some numbers, the New York State. The New York State C L C P A legislation, I think goals, and there's a scope and document for no food waste going to landfill by twenty thirty. So in terms of like the state's climate goals, food waste is, you know, not as big as building for transportation. But waste is a big problem and they're looking for a community like ours to figure out local solutions that we have control over. And we can control the cost. And it's and I'm I'm fairly confident in our ability to get a grant because. It's, I think this is a solution that they're that they're hoping that that we would lead with and they could use that as an example. In terms of like the impact globally to climate change, food waste is, if you have a factor in agriculture, that it's really, really huge. If you look at it in a more contracted way, it's it's like percent of the emissions in New York State.
What was that number? Sorry, what was that number? Great.
Eight. So I I think it's a terrific idea, but I really think we should explore having the town come in. And and having them maybe doing some sort of joint facility. Both are the reasons that probably the more people that we have involved, the better it is. It would help with the funding certainly. I don't think, you know, it sounds like this facility would have a lot of capacity. So I don't think it would be adding more to the to the cost. It would be adding more to the users and prying some of the costs. So I think somehow being able to bring the town and opening the facility to town would be a good a good idea.
Maybe the town could provide that fifty hundred dollars that we're looking for.
Or a town may want to move to their their site up off the Spulture Road.
For that.
Which is not as convenient for village residents.
That is also true. Right, and engaging the town delays the process.
Yeah.
The one thing I notice, it's a big, I mean, that site's not level, really. I assume it has to be leveled. You need a big pad out there. You're gonna put a metal, an iron, open pavilion up for electricity. It's not insignificant.
Do you want me to comment on it? So we haven't done any layout. I mean, obviously, the objective of the feasibility analysis is to, you know, optimize the layout. And then develop something that has the most cost effective.
Right.
Option for the village to move forward and he and I had talked to Vanessa about the the pavilion cover is potentially expensive. We were just talking about metals prices having gone up. You know, there are alternatives where you do not have it covered. You use a leachate collection system to handle the leachate that's generated. The rain does fall on it. Or you use tarping system. So, I mean, there are approaches to be evaluated to to try and make your construction costs manageable.
But it's not.
It's like everything is choices and decision making.
But that's what this is supposed to tell us.
Right, right, obviously, obviously.
So to be clear, I think this is a good idea. I I I think paying attention to our food waste is a good idea. And. You know. Someone's gotta get into this business.
Yeah.
I I I don't know if we're the right person or right entity, but, you know, in in. In the absence of anyone else getting into it, you know.
Well, first I'd like to thank Time Bond for reducing the cost from eighty two hundred to thirty five hundred. That's significant.
I I just want to be clear, it's a reduction in scope, a very substantial reduction in scope. It wasn't just like, we're just gonna.
It does include the grant application, those stuff, right?
It does, yeah.
You don't have to, Vanessa. It's just just every, we just get every other word.
So. We gotta move on. So I'd like to just make a motion that we move forward as providing we can find the funding to be able to do it, right? We haven't cleared where we're gonna get even the thirty five hundred yet to to move forward. And I think we need to resolve that question. And while we're resolving that, Vanessa could do the research to see if there's any other applicable municipalities who would like to to work with us and we can bring this back forward and forward again.
Okay.
That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I just.
Or discussion?
Just discussion, like, I just, I feel like if we're gonna move, if I'm gonna move forward with this and pursue exploring it. I want I want everyone to be, you know, in support of that. So.
So what's your, it sounds like time is of the essence, though. So what's your timetable, Gary? What are you thinking about in terms of?
Well, it's a rolling application. Right.
Right, but the later you get, the less there is.
I don't know. It's a rolling application. It's a first in, first out.
Right.
It's already, it starts July. We'd be going in in August in this case. So. Time Bond proposed a a a one month schedule to turn it around, right? So if we said, even if there's an opportunity that we have a meeting later this month. And we have the answer, we could still meet, come pretty close to meeting at the timetable. Be ready for August.
I just wasn't sure what your what your motion was.
My motion was to. Approve it pending availability of funding.
Vanessa, you have twenty five hundred in one of the lines for this?
She has two thousand in the compost line. I think that's it's in the central highway. We put that in there. So we're looking to, I was just gonna go over the other line items that Vanessa has to see how she wanted to break up.
Which we haven't had a chance to do yet.
And one, the reason Rick just speaking here, why I asked Highway had any interest in jumping in on this is because it's at the highway facility.
I know, I know, I know. I gotta protect my budget, though.
And if something happens in the future, he can. And if something happens in the future, he gets a building out of it.
He does get a building.
So, you know, I mean, it should be something to pay for when you get a building out of it.
It's also, my guys are working it, too.
We haven't addressed that, you know.
Right, that's the other part, there's gonna be manpower.
We haven't addressed the management.
The other thing I would really like to get to the bottom of is the violent over situation, because that's kind of a make or break, so.
All right, so I have a motion on table. Is there a second?
Second.
Vanessa's second. I believe we're discussing. So, so now we'll call revoked.
Okay, can we discuss one?
Yeah, you're...
I would, I would opt to, Vanessa, I'm sure can come up with fifteen-hundred dollars for one of her budget lines. And so I would just vote to move forward without delay, I think. Yeah, but that would be my preference. You've said others.
Lydia?
Aye.
Brandt?
Aye. Aye, I can vote aye.
Yeah, so, all right, so aye, we're gonna move, we're gonna move forward, we'll find the funding.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Task order number twenty-six. I sent you all an email on this. This was a late coming in in terms of our project on Center Street. And I don't know if y'all have a chance to read the email in terms of it, but there's, as we discussed earlier, there's always some discoveries in terms of trying to evaluate the drainage on Center Street, due to what kind of structures are there and some unknowns. So what, we had hired Time Bond to work through this proposal and document the drainage system. They came back with a proposal that said, we really need to camera this and get a good video of what's there before we can really move forward to help avoid having other costs. So the cost to mobilize and video the drainage system on Center Street was two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, which they're asking. They could have been mobilized today, but we said no, because this is a part of a bigger project to bring forward in terms of where we are, in terms of the scope of the project. So they can mobilize next week if we choose to move forward. So I'd like to make a motion that we hire Time Bond to video the drainage system on Center Street for two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
I'm gonna vote nay, but I don't really want to talk about it. I just don't want to do the drainage.
Okay.
I guess through the questions.
All right, any other special? All right, Rick?
Aye.
Vanessa? Lydia?
Aye.
Brandt said nay, I said yes.
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Rick seconded it. We'll move forward to video that. Okay, fairgrounds liquor license. This is something we do on a regular basis. This is, I'll read it in. This is from Anthony Patori. He represents Dutchess County Agricultural Society, Rhinebeck Fire Department, Inc., and JNS Concessions to apply for the New York State Liquor License Authority for permission to sell beer and wine at events listed below. During these events, beer and wine will be sold on-premise consumption within a fenced-in area. The Liquor Authority has requested acknowledgement from the village of Rhinebeck that you're aware of the above events and proposed sales. The sales will occur on the following dates, and for those who know, this is August twenty-third to twenty-eighth, twenty-two, which is Dutchess County Fair. And Dutchess County Agricultural Society, Inc., and Rhinebeck Fire Department, Inc., also JNS Concessions will apply for the permits. I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for the three entities to sell beer and wine at the Dutchess County Fair. Lydia? Discussion?
Does that include Foster's?
No. This is not them. I didn't read them off. This is all, I'm gonna call revoked. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so approved. Open sealed bids for two thousand and ten GMC truck. Just for the record, we have two sealed bids here. For the bid, this was originally going to go out to auction. There was a request to go to a sealed bid, which we approved. We'll open the bids now. Try to open.
Should we guess who bid? It's Matthews, right? No.
I don't think we have to say who. Who's Ward's bid? We have to read all the bids in? That don't work? Okay, all right, yeah, I'm gonna take that. All right, bid number one is from John F. Driesler, Jr., eight oh five Route one ninety-nine, Milo, New York, for two thousand pickup GMC. His bid is four thousand dollars. And that is from Kyle Jennings, a bid of two thousand dollars on two thousand and ten GMC truck in as-is condition. So I'd like to make a motion that we sell the bid to John F. Driesler, Jr. for four thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vanessa, I think we might have found the fifteen-hundred bucks.
It goes back to the highway, sorry.
See, there you go.
They bought the truck. All right, request for sealed bids. This was another bid that was out for auction, but we got requests to take it out, so I'm asking to remove it from the auction process. This is for our nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-nine Ford F-250, excuse me, with utility bed in as-is condition. So I would like to make a motion to go out for sealed bids for this truck.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So approved, okay. MVP insurance renewal. We got the latest bids documents for MVP Insurance Benefit Upgrade to all of our employees, except those who are part-time, and we presented this to the union, and it's been ratified by the union. There is no cost update to them, so they unanimously accepted the MVP Silver Package, which we currently have. It's equivalent to what we've always had, and it's in our budget, which we budgeted for this year as uncovered as well. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve MVP Insurance Renewal for the year twenty twenty, goes in effect in August of twenty twenty-two to August of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vanessa's aye, yeah. Okay, we have a vacation buyout. Vacation buyout for employee number twenty-seven. Employee number twenty-seven is requesting twenty-nine hours of accumulated vacation leave. This has been reviewed by treasurer and authorized to proceed, so I'd like to make a motion to approve vacation leave buyout for employee number twenty-seven for twenty-nine hours. Thank you, Brandt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next item was a tree removal request for a forty Chestnut. I've been informed that we really don't have a formal request to the Tree Commission, so this item has been tabled until we get a formal request to the Tree Commission. The next is, moving forward, Wine Coat Family Films. They put an application in for filming. This is Wine Coat Family Films, eight West Bard Avenue, Red Hook. They are requesting no parking places. The shoot will take place from July sixth to August twelfth, and not on weekends, and location is thirty-one Chestnut, thirty-one Chestnut Street. I'd like to make a motion to approve the film request by Wine Coat Family Films.
Do they have any, like, special trucks or anything?
No, I asked if, there's no special vehicles, no parking conditions, no police conditions. I think it's a...
So none of what we went through with...
Right, low oil.
Yeah, I agree.
Vanessa?
Do they have insurance?
Yes, part of their application includes that they have to submit the insurance.
Second.
Second, thank you, Brandt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so approved. All right, minutes approval. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from four twelve twenty-two, five ten twenty-two, and six eight twenty-two.
I made some comments after Martina went on vacation. I would like to make sure that whatever we approve includes those comments.
You can make a motion to, amend the motion to approve the comment.
I amend the motion to make sure that, oh, wow, that the minutes that we approve include my comments.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Yeah, I know. I thought someone was saying so. Treasures report.
Okay, the treasures report is for the period ending May thirty-first. The general fund ended the month with two hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents. The water fund ended the month with one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-eight cents. And the sewer fund ended the month with one hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Vouchers presented for payment, including the vouchers that were charged to the prior year up to May thirty-first and the current June vouchers in the general fund total one hundred and three thousand, eight twenty-two forty-five. In the water fund, forty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and eight cents. In the sewer fund, twenty-eight thousand, seventy-five dollars and twenty-three cents. We had one bill in the wastewater treatment plant sewer upgrades for one thousand, five sixty-five thirty-six, and we had one bill in the escrow for one thousand, one hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments I've read in by the treasurer.
What, the vouchers?
Vouchers, vouchers payments, yeah.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the monthly operating statement. An operating statement is divided with the revenue and expenditures through June fourteenth. MutiLink, we have started the implementation for the transition to the new billing software. Well, I don't feel that way.
You are with us, darling.
I will. Here, this will year ended May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. The new budget is in effect right now, and we have started the year-end close for twenty-one twenty-two. Water and wastewater bills and adjustments, as signed off by trustee Nunaker, are presented for authorization.
I would like to get the changes to the bills approved as submitted. Make a motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And lastly, there are no budget amendments this month. I'll present the prior year next month.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go to the police reports. Please try to move as quickly as possible. I'll read the May monthly summary for the police department. Total incidents in the town, twenty-three. Total incidents in the village, ninety-three. Total ticket, total number of tickets in the town are three. Total number of tickets in the village were forty-seven. Total arrests were one. Total number of accidents were six. In addition, our police provided brush pick, you know, coverage for brush pickup on two days. The traffic detail for the installation of the Astor Gates, a half marathon that was held through the town. Traffic detail for motorcycle ride, Memorial Day Parade, and continually doing farmer's market Sunday bike patrol details. Details on all the tickets are posted in the cloud. Building, planning, and zoning.
Building, planning, and zoning brought in ten thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars in May in mostly building permit fees. We continue to make a lot of money that way these days. And this isn't really building, planning, and zoning, but it's kind of building, planning, and zoning. I wanted to let you all know that we received word today that the Comprende de Plan was just granted the ten-thousand-dollar Greenway grants. So that's very exciting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Highway?
Okay, let me get my... Highway helped get the village ready for one of the weekends.
Do you want to move?
Yeah, Popeye ran off.
So, Brandt, you want to jump in on the heat locally?
Not much going on. We had a water leak on Rhine Cliff Road, which has been fixed. It's hard, it's difficult to find. I was the closest one to predict where it was.
You went bad?
Yeah. Then, in wastewater, we did discover, interestingly enough, that the wastewater line goes behind Village Greens, and it's in the swampy area, and the sewer lids weren't that high, so that could have been an area of infiltration, because people have been moving dirt around there and kind of pushing the...
Good job, good find.
So they're doing risers to get the sealed lid out of the area, and we'll just see if that helps with our infiltration problem, because we don't want to treat rainwater. It's a waste of money.
That's great.
And it hurts the capacity of our plant, so. Yeah, so we'll see.
So the daily pickup of brush has ended, and we have now returned to our alternate side of the village schedule. First Monday's on the north side of the village, first Monday, north side of the village, second Monday, south side of the village, and alternating throughout the summer. The highway department did help get the village all spiffied up for the Memorial Day Parade. It included painting some curbs, cleaning up the main drags, weeding flower beds. They've also been out delivering mulch, mowing the parks, and basically getting the equipment ready and running for the summer season.
Do the gates look good, should the Astor gates?
Oh, yeah, should be. So, yes, the highway department was involved in installing the donated gates at the pillars at the west entrance of Astor Drive. People remember, we had a wonderful donation of those gates. The village helped with the installation of gates and setting nice concrete pillars. They look quite handsome, and nobody's worn them yet.
Can you please remind them to empty the garbage at the main park? It's overflowing again.
I will tell them.
Thank you for that comment.
Is that the, is that, is that the dog waste only garbage can? Is it full of dog waste, or is it full of something else? Yeah, I have a feeling that people are putting more than dog waste in there. We have to go get it.
We do do Monday and Fridays. Vanessa and Vermaat?
Yeah, I wanted to, hopefully, my opponent is behind me. Said that we'll be meeting with state senator Rachel L. G., and all, along with representatives from Red Post Municipal Government, and we're gonna fill her in on our climate work and ask for her to advocate for us, so that's exciting. We did have our Bard College intern, Jack Lau, start on June first. And he works not just for the highway department, but also for Brandt and wastewater and water, working on GIS mapping and over there, and then with me, he's working on the compost project. And he's a really nice guy, and we're happy to have him. We, just a reminder, we could start taking payments at our A B charging stations. And then also let's just give a update that it looks like the FlexTech Energy Study, the LITAL, is really close to the report. It's being, it's being finalized, so we'll regroup at a meeting where we can discuss that report. And finally, in May, we hosted a youth workshop in conjunction with the Comp Plan Committee, as well as the Conex, Mar, and Vermaat, and we had a group of students and who did really, they spent the whole day with us and did a really interesting project where they did an assessment of the village. They did some brainstorming around interventions to improve our public spaces, and we'll continue to work with these students later this summer and hopefully through the fall. So if you're interested in the ideas that they came up with, there is a website that was actually built by one of the high school... So if you're interested in, in the ideas that they came up with, there is a website that was actually built by one of the high schoolers, Ben Ramon, and that's linked in my environmental report, if anybody would like to see. Um, that's it.
Thank you. Tree commission.
Okay, the tree commission has no actionable items, um, today, but I did promise at the last, um, meeting, we had thirty-six volunteers come out for our planting this spring, and I have the full list, and I think everybody deserves some credit, so I'm gonna read their names. Um, they were Walter Cotter, trustee Slavy, Mary Bassett, Allison Lewitt, Mark First, Michael Slavy, Joseph Rivera Ramos, Pat Evans, Kathleen Evans, Andrew Hunter, Ahmed Traub, Michael Florenza, Romolo Ortiz, Meg Crawford, Derek Mason, Vanessa Protosi, trustee Protosi, Carly, Carly Fakarli, Xavier Davy, Joyce Messenger, Mary Burns, Paul Higgins, Umberto Gutierrez, Miki Natakachas, Connie Loan, Jeff and Abby Clark, Jamie Derbisher, Tony Sendrich, Lori Teigen, and Wes Teigen, Maggie Dunin, Joyce and Steve Sanzolo, and Samantha and Josh Seager. So if you happen to run into these people, um, thank them. They put a lot of sweat equity into planting trees in our village. It's a contribution that should be here for many years, and we have another project that we're looking to roll out in the fall. So please come out and volunteer and help keep Rhine Beck a beautiful tree city.
Many hands make light work.
Indeed.
All right, um, also, I'd like to recognize some personnel, uh, for the Village of Rhine Beck. And sitting to my right is our treasurer, Karen McLaughlin, who has an anniversary of seven years, so thank you, Karen, for your contribution. Uh, water treatment plan operator, Justin Drabek, thirteen years. Water treatment plan operator, Tony Fada, twenty-one years. And Highway MEO, Tom Johnson, twenty-one years. So thank you to all who contribute to make the village a wonderful, enviable place to live. We can't do it without you. Uh, with that, it's nine sixteen. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved.